I'm trying to grow a little facial hair so maybe y'all can... Yeah, thank you. Be a good president. Please silence your devices, mute your devices, and I'll call a meeting to order. Councilman Jefferson is going to lead us in the indication.
Hello, Pastor. God, we thank you for bringing us here today. Thank you for your leadership in Dallas. Lead us in the right direction on our behalf. Let me stand strong for our city. Stand strong for our county. Stand strong for the people. As you put us in position to do so. Please, God, help us. Provide us what we need to get our love, to give our citizens love. And stand strong for, in your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me as we extend the light to the ladies.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This lady is not present, so I will lead us in a roll call. I can remember everybody's order. President Young, Councilman Orville.
Present.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Present.
Councilman Moore.
Present.
Councilwoman James. Councilman Randolph. Councilman Jefferson.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Present.
Councilman Johnson. Alright, and now for our citizen's request to the council. We have five minutes, and I just want to remind you that, keep them good time. First up would be Mr. Howard Spencer.
We might have a battery issue. It's switched to, it's switched to on, but it's not, it's not lit up and it's not working.
Testing, testing. Hear me?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening and hello, everybody. My name is Howard Spencer, and I'm trying not to cough through this with all these allergies and everything. I'll put that mask back on real quick. I come to forward to you today to say hello, and been gone for a little bit, and coming back home here, and wanted to talk to you about the correction of the agendas, really not replacing the windows for Byrd Elementary School, but a business proposition for Byrd Elementary School. And then I think on the second line at, maybe my writing was about replacing the windows for Dallas Academy on a private note, since being a historic preservation person and on the board, it's come to me through several people on our board that immediate need is to be done for, on behalf of myself or Historic Preservation, or both, to replace the broken windows, since the weather and all the rain and everything are damaging some of the floors in there. It's our prerogative to take that upon myself, if I could be a custodial care and release home harmless, to have the provisions made to the windows to be repaired, maybe in a timely manner, which is, you know, within, hopefully, a month or two, with your blessing. Secondly, the most important thing is that we've heard through the grapevine that Mr. Lewis is, this is the second note, the Byrd Elementary School interested. I have come before the council last year on video and made a proposal and listed the engineers and the architects from Atlanta that will be proposing a due diligence study, feasibility study, on the use and proper zoning use and conforming use for Historic District as Byrd Elementary. I'm capable of, and I am doing that right now, and compiling the petition for the use to be more of an arts student study area, or some other kind of form of use of educational use for Arts, Byrd Elementary. And Mr. Trey Taylor and Kalina have both moved into the house adjacent to that, and they are on a program with me and some of the homeowners, and I haven't gotten to the petition yet to utilize that place to be used, conforming use, instead of some housing or some other thing that would be detrimental to the homeowners' values of their homes. Our extensive study will be presented to the council. Everybody wants to know how much. It's not a matter of how much we'll pay for, it's a matter of how much we have to repair. We don't think it'll be a three-part phase. First phase would be the far right of the building, face of the building, which is in better repair, versus the far left building, which has had a tree fallen and it still has some damages within the weather of the interior. That proposal will come before you by July 4th or a little after, in depth about what we want to plan on doing, we, and also homeowners voicing their opinion that live within 300 feet. I think if you even try to change the zoning or use, a change use, it has to be under a conditional use, and falls within a zoning law, legal law. And the homeowners have to be, I think legally, have to be aware of what's going on through sending them a petition, or sending them something by mail saying this is what the use is gonna be. So, I would like to take it upon myself, as we, the neighbors of the area, we've been trying to do, since I've been gone, I noticed the grass is, has been pretty high. It's been maintained probably maybe last four months from now, today's date. But we'd like to also kind of pass a proposal that if we could have a whole harmless give to the city attorney, and perform weed eating and cutting the grass in the front and the sides of the back. Along with that proposal, there'll be a, probably a 501(c) to bring up a party that arts revive, like sort of, to propose a mission statement of the use of the property for education in the arts. You might say, well, don't we have that at the Dallas Academy? That falls within a whole different, a whole different mission statement. Ours would be presented as artists all over the United States that Trey has abilities to talk with and brand here, and to be a teaching school, at the same time workshops. The monies that would be appropriate there will be funded by myself and some other private parties. And then from there, we'll go on and get in front of you and make another proposal. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the time, keeper, keeping me straight with the five minutes.
Sorry.
Or unless that's a call, sorry. So if there's any other following questions, I can really only answer so many questions right now because we're in a preliminary feasibility study.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And does any of y'all have any questions? Or any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I want to say thank you.
It's not necessary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tap over.
We got a light over there, I can't see you. Maybe it's a halo, halo over there, I don't know.
Go ahead.
This, by the council, we are aware of, brought to the attention in Puppet Building, committee meeting about the Dallas Academy building, where we already have discussed, and we will be given the minutes that we discussed about it, if you're around, if you're here, and also there, we brought it in the minutes, Dr. Q were the first one, it came before priority, a year ago, when he was talking about Byrd School. So you'll have an opportunity, just like the other person, you know, what we do. Take it in this way.
I appreciate the opportunity. It's been, it's been a long time of waiting for us to help out the community, to actually have that conforming for the historical single-family animals community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Anybody else? Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Spencer, and I just want to encourage you to reach out to Ms. Minnie B.
Yes, I have, I have both there, in this room. I have both of those I've reached out to.
Okay.
And a follow-up will be later on in this queue.
Okay, good. I'll put that in there.
And then after that, I'll follow up with my district, person in my district, to Mr. Lay.
Feel free to do that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have Mr. Doug Owens. Mr. Doug Owens. Present.
Good evening, how everyone is doing tonight?
Good evening.
As she just stated, my name is Bashta Shaw, and this is my husband Ellis Shaw, and we was informed that we wanted to let you guys know that we wanted to vacate the alley because reason being said, we have been keeping it clean for going on 14 and a half years. We blocked the alley due to the fact of kids pulling up, having sex, dropping rap knees, hobos, homeless people running through, break-ins, people shooting, throwing guns, running through the alley, and I absolutely have got tired of it. I spoke with my city council, and he told me just continue to do what I was doing, keeping it clean. But I see, and I wanted further, so I blocked it off, and since I have blocked it off, it has stopped all the traffic. No one has been coming through. No one has been doing anything, and it's clean, we've had trees cut down, I have a receipt from Shelby's Tree Company, who we deal with here in Salem, Alabama, and everything has been going smooth. But to my knowledge, my neighbor asked upon me to remove the fence, and I told him that I could not do it because it was a problem, because the alley has been cleaned and the traffic has been stopped. Now, I'm aware he was living in Georgia, but he's back here himself, and that doesn't define for me to just move the fence, because you want to be able to come through with your traffic, with whatever you're doing at, you're in your mom's house. I'm just all about the safety. I'm tired of getting on the ground. I'm tired of getting the floor. And this crime has to stop, and if y'all open up that alley, I'm gonna be afraid. Thank you all. Would you like to say something?
Yes, um, I also, with the alley being open, people was breaking into houses, and I've actually stopped people from breaking into houses, because I would literally be in the alley while people were going into houses, and I would see them, and I would stop them. They actually tried to get in my neighbor's yard when I was in the alley, and I prevented them from going in his yard, breaking into his car. And so, after I decided to block it off, that has literally stopped, put a halt to anybody coming through, any crime or anything, and I actually put up lights as well to light up the alley. So, it just, like I said, my wife says she, he came, he wants us to reopen it, so he could be able to get in to his yard, but I don't feel like that's right.
Okay, thank y'all for coming forward. Do any of y'all have any questions?
I have a question. Ms. Bashta, let me ask you this. How many residents are part of that alley? How many people live, how many people live in that location?
Actually, as of right now, it's just me, my neighbor, and Michael Johnson, that's on the city council, but he's not here. He owns the house, and I think they're doing tax, they have a tax service there, but she doesn't drive to the back.
So really, there's only like 34 residents?
Yes, ma'am. Now, it's a house that's empty that belongs to my neighbor, but it's not ready yet.
Can I tell you this?
Yes, ma'am.
An alley is a, is a, is a public alley.
It is.
It's to the residents.
I'm aware.
And before you blocked the alley, did you take the steps to find out before you put that fence up, did you have the rights to put it up?
No, ma'am, I didn't get any permission, but however, I've talked with several, I talked with the city council, and before Reverend Darrell Moore died, he told me to continue doing what I was doing, because during that time, he was coming out, and actually, he had sent somebody back there twice, but they stopped. I was told that the city no longer comes through the alley, before we cleaned it out, fire trucks, ambulance, any vehicles could not get through there. Once we opened it up, you can come through.
And then also, the alley doesn't go all the way through, because there's a house.
There's a dead end there.
Yes.
Yes, there's a house there.
There's a house at the end of the alley, that was built at the end of the alley.
Let me ask you this, I'm gonna have the attorney, because we had this problem before, with the same incident that you had, but we're gonna have the attorney to look into this, and also for the residents in that area where you at, let's hear, saying if they're willing, they want this alley blocked, because the alley belongs to the residents, like if somebody back behind you, two people there on one side of the street, or somebody that's on the outside.
They have a fence up as well.
Oh, they have a fence up too?
And may I also add, nobody has a back fence to that alley until my husband did the work himself. Nobody was going through there then. It was woods.
It was trees.
Snakes.
We cut the, we had, we paid to get the trees cut and removed, so we could.
We vacated.
And who was the councilperson? You said it, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson owns, he owns the house on Green Street. My address is 1611.
Who's the councilperson in addition?
Yeah, no, Randolph is my councilperson, but...
Well, Mr. Randolph, you need to get with our attorney, so he can look this up and and get, you know, and verify that it's on the same page, because the alley belongs to the government, the people that lives in the residence, because I have an alley without, in our area, and I understand what she's talking about. We let, can we let, bring this to the council, Randolph some attention, and get he get with our attorney, to solve the issues, to make sure that we're doing what I think?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. I was gonna recommend the same question, but I appreciate y'all coming forward.
Okay, thank you all.
Okay, next up, we have Charlotte West.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine West, and I own the house next to Rashad. I've been living there for 30 years, before she even came along. The alley, I have, we have two houses, they only have one. When they first came out to start doing the fence, they had a fence to go into their backyard, not to come all the way through, because it blocked off at the end of aisle two house. And you have to go back out to field pot to get out, you can't go all the way down. I had started cleaning the alley off myself, before they used to move there. And I continued to do it, and then when I got sick, my son came home, and he started cleaning it off, because I was no longer able to do it. But I started, and like I said, I've been here for 30 years, never had no problem with nobody breaking in back there, nobody in the back having no sex or anything in that back alley. And I know this for a fact, I raised my children there, never had a problem. Never. And what they're talking about, what Mr. Shaw is talking about, Mr. Shaw didn't even know anything about the alley, because he wasn't living with her during that time, when it first got started, of cleaning it up. But I know what I did. I worked myself down, trying to keep it clean, but like I said, when I got sick, I could no longer do it. And my son came, and he continued. Where you go?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
If I can, I can give each one of y'all, show y'all what I've been doing in that community. I actually own seven, eight houses on that street, and not only have I cleaned the alley that she's speaking about, I cleaned the whole alley, myself, in my crew, and cleaned the alley up on the other side of Green Street. So, and I got, and it's, both of them are still clean to this day. Yes, one, the alley behind the house did grow up a little bit more in the last past year or so, and I came back myself personally, and cleaned the whole alley again, which me and her, I had a discussion with, when I initially started to clean the alley, cut down about 12 trees, gave her the wood, so she could burn her fireplace. I said, when I come back, I'm gonna put a fence up, and redo everything, and we both can utilize this alley. I said, and I don't want the alley blocked, it don't make sense for you to block the alley, because I own the houses on there, and every house has a driveway. So if I got to get in my backyard, and I can't get through that driveway, there's no other way to get in but through the alley. So that's, that was the purpose of me, so cleaning it up, and cleaning the other alley over there behind my other houses, so we could see what's going on. We also had lights put in the backyard, so it can light the alley up, and also, I had a survey to come out, real survey. They came out, surveyed all, the whole, I had them survey the whole block, so I can know everywhere, all my plots, or where, every, every, each individual house, where the land was staked at. She's on my land, right now, four to five feet over, on my land, where she done put a fence down there, and built up things on there. So, we gonna have to have a discussion about that, too. I have proof to show, everything, and I've been involved in the community ever since I've been back, doing everything I can to help out. The street is clean, it was a dump site in the street, in the street, when you go down the street, big dump site. I stopped it. I got with Mrs., with everybody that I could around here to help out, and everybody pitched a hand in, so we can get this done. I have proof to show everything. Can I pass y'all? This way? And all the neighbors. All the neighbors. And all the neighbors in the neighborhood have signed this willingly, you know? I have, I have proof to show what I've done, and I am just, I didn't just do that alley, I came both alleys from front to back.
So we're talking about the same alley?
Yes. And when she went to go put a fence up or whatever, I told her, I said, hey, if you're gonna put a gate up, put two gates up, both of us have locks to it, so if I need to utilize and get it to my backyard, once I get rid of people in the property, I'm not gonna be able to go in their yard anymore, or come through their driveway, I'm gonna have to start going through the back. She agreed upon it, okay, well, we can do this, we can do this, and that. I try to keep peace, do whatever it takes to keep peace. She's been very disrespectful, cussing my mother out, calling all out of her name, doing all kinds of little small things to upset my mother, like, just something small, like for the trash. Everybody knew that you put your trash at the dri, at your end of your driveway, so the trash man could pick it up. Well, you can see in the picture right there, she bring her trash all the way down to my mother's driveway. You know, it's a lot of little things that she do that don't, don't make sense, and I'm, I'm about tired of, so I just want to nip everything in the bud, you know? That's why I had everything surveyed the right way. So when the man came, they surveyed, the people, the people came and surveyed today, and finished up the surveys today, he called her out, and came back there and showed her, which my mother been telling them forever, before she even put the fence up, you're over on my property. But Mrs. Shaw, she just seems as if she can do whatever she wanna do. Well, I'm here to show her that she can't do what she wanna do. It's lawful.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all coming forward. Y'all have any questions?
Yes, recommend, councilperson, you talked to Sam too?
Yes, I did.
So what, what we recommend, as the district, Sam represents, to get with Attorney Madison, because we do have something on the book about the alley, because they changed it back here, during the time they were saying that the alley belongs to the residents, and we had a problem before with somebody trying to block it, and we need to get with Sam, and he get with Major Madison, to solve this issue, and I hope that y'all can work this out together, because we need, we want y'all to work it out the right way, and we go back to some book, and have it all figured out.
I have no problem with that.
I just wanted to point out in front, that first of all, I've already been to the alley. I went Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah. The other thing is, as it relates to the alley proper, that's public property, as it relates to any dispute between the two individuals who spoke here, and any private property, that's a private civil matter, the city won't be weighing in on that, but the alley itself proper is, is a public, public issue. I just wanted everyone to hear that publicly. Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna ask you, we're down court of law, so. Appreciate y'all coming forward once again.
Thank you all.
Last, but not least, we have Mr. LaMarcus.
Good evening, our mayor, council, everybody. Oh, I'm gonna talk real fast and get out y'all way, talk about this small business. Oh, everybody know I try to clean the setup, keep the city clean, and do everything I can. Tomorrow, if not tomorrow, Monday, I'm gonna reactivate Project Clean Up sale. Oh, I myself, I have four zero turns, I have a lot of weed, and chainsaws and everything, and I also have a great fan of God, Mr. John Lunk, Reverend Lunk, right there. He has two zero turns, and he has agreed to help me in the city itself, and get some of these areas clean, you know? Y'all might hear me say some things, you know, everything I say ain't always right, but I'm tired of seeing Henry Hicks struggle and do what he doing. He needs some help, and if ain't nobody coming to work for the $9, I'm gonna just come and initiate some cleanup, and I'm gonna start. Alright, I don't know if nobody know, but I'm the groundskeeper for the housing authority now, and I worked for them two weeks, and I'm off two weeks. So I'm finishing up Felix Heights today, and I'm gonna be off for two weeks. The grass in some areas in the city itself is this high, the sidewalks are covered, this high. It's areas all over that are too high, and I don't know what's going on in the cemeteries and these recreational parks, but Henry Hicks should be the only departmental head, get some work done. I pass out boxes at block parks every day. For the last three or four weeks, the road is right here, it's the right of where it does. It's the right of way right there that's getting such a right of way. The same five or six branches have been there for six weeks. I just wanted to see how long they were gonna sit there. It's been there for six weeks. I'm gonna get them up tomorrow, but I just want y'all to know that they've been there. If these departmental heads are getting paid, I don't know their, know their amount. If they getting paid this money, they need to get something done. They should not sit and wait on the mayor to give them direction to do something. The mayor might, is their boss, but you still have a taxpayer dollar that you are collecting, that you supposed to do. You got the Fourth of July coming up. We got tourists, visitors and everybody coming to the city. The city looks amazing, but I promise you on behalf of myself and John Lumpkin, the city gonna look better by the Fourth of July. I talked to Mr. Hicks and he told me anything I need, we gonna collaborate together and get this city together. Uh, the city of Selma don't owe me nothing, like Councilman Billy Young say, a thank you is great enough for me. Here's Mr. Lumpkin saying, saying, uh, release waiver for volunteer work that we finna do. If we get hurt, it's on my business and on his business. But we finna crank up our zero turns and we finna clean this city up. And Old Lyle Oak is a Hicks store cemetery. It should not look like it look. We can't get Lincoln together, Lincoln is together now and Mr. Smith and Chase Alonser have got hands together. New Lyle Oak is looking good, but Old Lyle Oak, y'all know they had the big thing in there in July around the confederacy. We can't have the tourists and stuff coming our city and the cemetery look like that. That's where I might start Monday morning. I know Knox School having a little problem with the city, not, not with the city, with the school board. Cause they lost their, whoever doing that stuff there. I'm probably gonna work on Knox School tomorrow and over the weekend, cause the grass at Knox School is this high. We can't have a graduation Monday at Knox School Elementary with the grass this high. This is in Councilman Janet May Thomas Ward, and she can tell you how grass, how, how the grass is at, at Knox School is this high. And like I said, then, Henry, it's like, it's like Henry Hicks is the only departmental head that has something to do going on out the side. I'm not talking about the big people that work up in here. I'm talking about the outside stuff, these parks and these recreation, they need to look better. The kids have nowhere to, to play. If, don't nobody like Kaboom Park, Kaboom Park, y'all spent all that money in there. We got to keep this stuff looking a little better. If they don't wanna do it, I got, I cut grass every two weeks, y'all. I can throw that in for mine for the rest of the year. But I'm not here to not to bash nobody or nothing like that. But you cannot sit and wait on the mayor to point his finger and say, do this. You got to take the initiative and do something yourself. If you want the city to look better and want your walls and stuff to look better, you got to take the initiative and be a man and do it yourself. You just can't sit down and say, okay, I'm gonna wait on the mayor until he give me the direction for the, gonna start this, start this. You get what I'm saying? You are the department, departmental head, that's why the mayor put you in that position for you to do your job. We as citizens are expecting them to do their job. I did Old Lyle Oak in two days, if I'm not mistaken, with, with two, two or three people. So this, this excuse about, we don't have enough workers, we don't have this. I did it with a weed eater, one zero turn. I, I cleaned up the city, I almost went one zero turn, one weed eater and a couple of work. So these excuses, we need to start giving answers and quit making excuses. The city look amazing and that's all I wanna say. Me and John Lumpkin, we gonna get our crews together and we gonna start initiating a cleanup in this city. Of Selma, cause it look bad, I, who I get used to, I get used to the turner?
Please, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Madison. That, that, that's outside document, so we gonna get out and we gonna make the city look better. Y'all, all thing I say, y'all gonna tell the difference. And I got a crew out here finished, I thank y'all for letting me here. Miss Thomas, Councilman Thomas, all that stuff you were worrying about, find somebody else to worry about, it'll get done. I hope the rest of them follow, departmental heads. I'm gone, y'all.
I just wanted to leave, yeah, please. I'm waiting for the council to respond. I'm waiting for the council to respond if anyone has, or, or, or any questions. Whatever response, right?
I will respond.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilwoman Jane.
Talking to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, citizens, good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Snow, I just wanna applaud you for your effort. I wanna applaud you for just loving this city, just to bring forth what the city needs. Uh, myself, I'm willing to do whatever I need to do. Because I know Mr. Hicks can't do it by himself and I know Public Works can't do it by themselves. So we all have to pitch in and do what's right for the city of Selma. I'm aboard if you need me to bring you gatorade, but I can't cut grass, but I can bring you some gatorade. But, uh, I'm willing to do whatever I need to do and not only my board and anybody else's board that needs help. Uh, because one cell is one cell. We, we not divided, we one cell. So we do want Selma to look good. I just wanted to thank you and Mr. Lumpkin for stepping up and you wanna do what you wanna do. And maybe we'll get some more people on board with you all to help bring Selma, because it didn't get like this overnight. And it's not gonna take one day to get it back where it need to be. So I'm on board and I just want to applaud you for loving Selma.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Jane. Yeah, that's, I also get it, the department has an opportunity for us.
Uh, good evening, council, uh, to the dawn in the mayor's absence and to all the council people and to the, uh, to everybody here. I want to applaud Mr. Snow as well. But I do have to say this, and because I'm a team player, okay? I have a team that I live with. The cemetery department, the recreation department, they're going to do their job. They got their people, they, they're hiring their people, they're getting the equipment in that they need to do the job. We've been working together to cut cemeteries, I've been cutting Lincoln, I've been working in the cemetery, I've been working in the parks, until they get their stuff together. I cannot sit here and not say anything about these guys because they are doing their job. They just got to get the people to do it. And they, what, each department only have one person. I know sometimes you can take one person and do a whole lot. But we gotta train a lot of these people that we're getting now, we gotta train them. Uh, so I don't want the public to think that these department heads are not doing their job. They are doing their job. They just gotta get a chance to get their feet up on them. These are new hires, new department heads. Give them a chance. Let's, okay, what you doing is great. Let's all, let's do it together. All of us, the recreation department, the cemetery department, my department, all of you and anybody, and look, the residents gotta play a part in this too. It's not just us. I spent, I'm coming before the council tonight for ten thousand dollars worth of garbage that's thrown on the street, that we gotta pay for. Okay? We picked it up. Y'all throwed it on the ground. You didn't put it in the cans. So we had to come back and pick it up. Now I got to come before y'all and ask for money to pay for it because I don't have it in my budget. Okay? So let's not just point fingers at, and I'm not saying you are, but don't, don't, let's not do that. Let's all work together and let's get this done. Okay? Because we got competent people in these departments. They're ready, they're willing, they're doing everything they can to get this city cleaned up. So I just could not sit there and take accolades for something that I know all of us are trying to do. I'm a team player, I got a team that's working with me and I'm gonna support my team. So all I'm asking y'all to do is support us.
Thank you very much. And, and I will give, um, the recreation department head and cemetery department head an opportunity to speak to if y'all want.
I'm right here.
Okay, so, I recognize who you met. Hey, go ahead and speak.
Sure, if you want one's in line.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank, thank you so very much. And I thank Mr. Snow, I don't know you, so it's good to put a, look, part of a face with a name, so that's great. And I appreciate that and I wanna thank, uh, again, we're teammates as Mr. Hicks stated. And, uh, let me be clear, and Mr. Hicks is right, we're just now starting to hire, we've hired four people. Those four people are new, they haven't quite been at work two weeks. And I would hope that you have actually seen some change, uh, in those two weeks. They were out at Running Sharp Park today. Uh, Monday, we actually cleaned three parks, mowed three parks, cleaned three parks on Monday. And then headed over to help Public Works over by Selma High and the belts broke on our mowers, all of them, like synchronized. So we were a day behind, we intended to be at Running Sharp on Tuesday. Last week, we spent a lot of time training. Our assistant director, Mr. Gerald Baron, is working with them, so he's going with them. So everybody's going to the same park so he can be with them and make sure that everything is okay and people are safe. As well as also doing some additional assessments. Uh, because we know we're opening back up, we gotta put the rims back up and things like that. So we were trying to check to see if we needed to purchase any backboards and, you know, so that we'll be ready by June first. So I would hope that it today, that you could go by the park on First Avenue. There are a number of places, including out at, uh, at the Stadium Block Park, that whole area. There was a major sweep through there today. So now that we have, you know, four people makes a difference. We're not finished hiring, but just going from one person, Mr. Baron. And then now he has four people to train and also Mr. Jackson is back with his wonderful wisdom that he is sharing with us in terms of, cause I, I don't know anything about grass and chemicals, I just know you need them. That's, I, I do other things, that's not what I do. But his knowledge base, and so by him being there as in a transition period and helping us to teach us how to do some of those things that he knows. So I just ask, as Mr. Hicks did, that you give us an opportunity to train. It's not overnight, it's not gonna happen overnight. But patience and teamwork is really the key in this point in time. Again, those four new people have only been here less than two weeks. So, uh, but in that time, a whole lot has gotten done, uh, in that time. So I just want to say that and I appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. I'll give you a chance to respond right there.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, but the city of Selma just came out of four years away. Y'all just need to come in and move a little faster. We can't stand for another year or three more years or two more years of this stuff here. We just gotta jump on in first, you gotta roll with what you got and keep going. If you ain't, if you ain't got Kool-Aid, drink sugar water, that's all I said, you gotta work with what you got, we got the roll. We got, we ain't got six more months, we ain't got six more year. Fourth of July is coming up, this stuff has to get cleaned. So if nobody else don't wanna tell you, as a citizen, I'm gonna tell you. When I went to Bush Hall the other, other month, I paid eight thousand dollars for one zero turn, I paid twelve thousand for another. And on that twelve thousand dollars, they put about four or five hundred dollar worth of taxes and I'm sure them taxes are paying some payroll down there. We got to move a little faster with what we doing to get the city right. That's just point blank here, ain't no, ain't no other, ain't no excuse about it. We got to move faster and we got to do this stuff fast. The Fourth of July is coming up, these people wanna come in the city, they wanna play in the parks. They wanna walk down the sidewalks, they wanna do all it. Excuses, done. It's trying to get some stuff done, 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 just enough excuses, excuses, that's all, that's all I mean, excuses.
Thank you, Mr. Snow, I, I want to remind everybody, we, we don't work as fast as you.
I think we work a little bit faster than even you or Mr. Snow realizes. Uh, today, May the twentieth, a request for information was released from the clerk's office. The mayor and a team of individuals. I emphasize the word team because the gauntlet was thrown down to encourage people other than Mr. Hicks and the Public Works Department to do something. The code enforcement director, the public works director, the city clerk, my office, the mayor, all came together around a notion that the grass wasn't gonna wait. You're right, and I, I really, we do not applaud you for your enthusiasm and ambition.
Yes.
But legally, nobody can do anything on city property without a contract or permission from this body on property belonging to the city of Selma. This body, not me, city attorney, not the mayor, this body. You have to have this body's permission and or a contract. So that's the first thing I wrote to make sure Mr. Snow heard before he left. The second thing is that a request for information was released today. The reason I know it is because I drafted it and delivered it to the clerk's office. And the mayor insisted, insisted that it be sent out today to all the contractors who might qualify to be able to help with the issue of cutting grass and weed a bit. And by the way, hauling off any trash generated from that effort. Because you and I both know, all of us in here know, people cut their grass and a lot of times they take a weed, a blower and blow it away, right in the street. That doesn't disappear. I know, it doesn't seem like a big deal when I cut my, well, I don't cut my grass, I, I'm too old to cut grass anymore. But it gets cut every ten days or so. And I insist that the person cutting it not leave one clipping of grass on the street in front of my house. Because it's public property, it's not my, my property, the streets. The RFI went out today, that is going to be a pre-conference, and I was hoping the mayor was gonna discuss this tonight, but he's, he wasn't available earlier. The RFI went out today, that's going to be a pre-award conference for any and all contractors interested. The pre-award conference is to tell all of the potential vendors what the process is for doing business with the city of Selma. That information is already being disseminated as I speak. How to do business with the city of Selma. It was designed to coincide with trying to make all this happen by June the first. Not three years, not three months, not three weeks, June the first, twenty twenty-one. Nobody knew about this in the public because we were busy trying to get it done and we're still not finished. We want to invite Mr. Snow to be one of those individuals to gain the information about contracting for the city of Selma. But you can't just release people to arbitrarily and capriciously start doing things all over the city. And, and, and that's what I was really concerned about, that this body, this body controls. This body controls the public property and finances of the city of Selma. So I can't tell Mr. Snow what to do. The mayor can't tell him what to do, only you can tell him what to do or not to do collectively. A quorum of you present and a majority of you voting in the affirmative. But the work is not only being done, we're going to involve and engage more private contractors because we do need help getting it done and we intend to get it done in toto, all across the city of Selma, at or about the same time, not over a period of weeks and months. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for asking. I, I have a, uh, a quick question. You, you sent a request right away, you made a request, I was on, is that what you?
No, 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 we, I forgot planning and development, they were involved too. We sent a request for information so that the information could come back from the contractors and we could give them information about what it is they will be doing. Yes, yes, well, not just how to contract with the city. The scope of services about what it is they're gonna be doing. Both, both how to do business with the city and what work the city wants done. That's why we're asking them to attend a pre-award conference. We also giving them an opportunity to visit the properties. We'll be sending them a list of where all the We'll be sending them a list of where all the properties are we want cut. They need to know that in order to be able to tell us what they're willing to do and how much they think that should cost.
And what is the date of that conference?
I, I don't have the date with me. The letter just came out today. We want to get the return information from contractors, and then we will go from there.
I have a question for you. I just heard you say that you were going to, um, you and your department here, the whole body staff, if you guys were going to send out a scope of, of instruction in each district where they, uh, the contractor would have a chance to build, build on this. So.
Citywide, citywide.
Citywide. But as you asked the city attorney for this city of Selma, are you going to, uh, once you do this, uh, this body of council would need to see that layout that, uh, you're planning on for the council to see?
There's no way around it. Uh, matter of course, there's no way around it. There's no way around it.
Attorney, did you say you guys sent them out today?
We sent out the request for information today.
Okay.
The request for information.
Can, can I ask a quick question before you go back in? What, what constituency forum of council? Uh, so we have a forum here and none?
And then we got this one, we got something on that. We got some string too.
Yeah, it, it would have to be Tuesday, whatever you do.
Was that right?
No, no. No, I'm saying, okay. That's what I just wanted.
Uh, uh, just real quick, this is, uh, what you have, uh, come out.
Okay, uh, he said something about you can't do no work unless the mayor do a contract, where the mayor said he wasn't doing no contract, number one. And number two, I'm finna start cleaning up the city tomorrow. If they want, if y'all won't lock me up, lock me up. I been to jail before. I'm cleaning up the city, and I'm done. Good night, good night.
Thank you.
Thank all the citizens for speaking there. Uh, all right. I'll do the mayor's report. You bet.
Good evening. I will present this report in just a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Snow.
The first item on his agenda is Mr. Hicks. No, it started, um, Janice should get it.
Good evening again. Okay, well, I am here to, uh, start our process for to request to adjust budget line items to actually purchase equipment. So, we are in need of additional equipment, because our staff, of course, is growing, and the current equipment is not sufficient with, to maximize our labor force, nor is it sufficient to maintain the current nineteen parks and facilities that the city owns. So I am need to adjust two budget lines so that we put funds in the right place uh, in order to purchase that equipment. And I'm looking to move, uh, funds into non-fixed assets under four thousand, and then, uh, there's another line item, fixed assets over five thousand. And looking to take those funds from, uh, one, the tournament expense line, uh, quite naturally, because we did not have, uh, our baseball softball season. And then also the regular salaries line, because at this point, we're just about seventy-five percent through the year, and we have vacancy. And so would like to move those funds, uh, into the non-fixed asset line under four thousand, and then fixed assets over five thousand, looking to purchase four zero-turn lowers, two backpack lowers, three trimmers of weed eaters, two edgers, and we are in need of an additional trailer. That way, we can disperse two teams, uh, at one time. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Go, go ahead, counsel.
I just heard you just named.
Ma'am?
Equipment, you just named equipment.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm in your budget line.
Uh, uh-huh.
You said you want to move. Are you moving this money for to buy the equipment into the, the, uh, line?
Uh, are you? Moving the money to purchase.
Yeah. You're moving this amount. Could you tell me how much you plan on moving to that amount?
Sure, sure. Okay, into the non-fixed asset line, we need to move five thousand dollars into that line.
Okay.
Okay?
The non fixed.
The non fixed, mhm. And then into fixed assets over five thousand, we need to move thirty thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thirty thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Five hundred?
Yes, ma'am.
And this gonna come out of your?
It'll come out of two places. One, the tournament expense line, and that's five thousand dollars. Second line would be regular salaries, and that would be the thirty thousand, five hundred.
One of the line items you just said, you're gonna move it out of, can you repeat that, the first one you just said?
Uh-huh, the tournament expense?
Yes.
Yes, that tournament? Tournament?
Mm-hmm, the tournament expense.
Yes, ma'am.
So that line item, the tournament expense, you're using, and you're gonna do that five thousand.
Mhm.
From there.
I'll come with you. I just have a copy of the, um, the line items that you're trying to move the money from. It would be, it would be good if each one of us didn't have a copy.
This, this was sent in.
I get a copy. We, we.
Oh, okay. I did send.
Put this in there, give me, give me.
All, all we got in that email was that, was this item right here.
Oh, there was no attachment to it?
There was no attachment.
Oh, okay. I'm like, I knew I submitted it. Okay, and that's when I didn't know what happened.
So y'all can do better, y'all can do better.
Sure, that's not a problem. But it was submitted and signed off.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? I didn't realize you'd get this.
She's gonna get it.
Any other questions?
Well, I wanted to look at it and forward.
We may have some more questions about it.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, okay. So hopefully that'll take care of some of the other concerns. All right. And I think she went to make copies right, right now, so you'll get it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Counsel, my car, I said, could you repeat what document that was those you guys were requesting that she said, um, are either documents in this name? So I wish that to you guys, I took your.
We, we did not get the supporting documents on the report. We just got that first page of the report in the email, unless, unless I.
Is that just the, the recreation department direction?
No, the whole, the mayor's report agenda, that's probably, we only got one page, which was the copy.
So you, so you guys did not get the entire report with everything attached to it?
That's correct. We just got the copy of that.
Okay, I grew up, I'm just, I don't know why, that didn't complete, and the EC is there a way for me to forward that to you guys now? But next on the agenda is, um, Mr. Hicks. He has two items, and he'll be presented.
Y'all can't see what I'm talking about.
No, yeah. We don't know.
I thought y'all already had it. Uh, good evening again, counsel. Uh, well, one thing I've already mentioned, uh, is the waste management bill.
No.
That we, uh, collected the garbage for, back, uh, a couple of weeks ago. We finally got the bill, and, uh, we, it succeeded the ten thousand dollar mark. So we had to come before you guys to get it approved, to get it, uh, to get it paid, because it's not directly in my line items, but it had to go through the governmental department, uh, line item to get it paid. So it would have to go through the, uh, finance department with your approval. But the total, the total bill was, uh, ten thousand, ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents. Again, it was ten thousand, ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents. And, uh, this, this was, uh, I thought it was forwarded to you, but you should have a copy of it, you know, once you get stuff to you.
And you're, you're asking from London to be moved from one line item to another, is what you?
Well, this is not being moved per se. This is just paying us, we are asking for the council to approve this bill to be paid. And, uh, it was gonna have to come out of, uh, another line item, or the governmental line item, because there's never been a, a line item in the public works budget for this. But due to the fact that we had so much garbage out on the streets, and we had to pick it up, and this is for the tipping fee. And, uh, once the tipping fee was added, then they had to have the environmental fee and the gas fee were added to it, because the amount that, what we picked up was a hundred and fifty-five tons, or point five. So that was seven thousand and some dollars.
You said a hundred and fifty-five, point five?
Yeah, point five tons. And, uh, the, uh, that amount was, I don't have it in front of me, I think it was seven thousand and some dollars, but after they add, oh, seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-five cent for the actual garbage, but then you had the environmental fees and your gas fees added to it, so that brought it up to, uh, ten thousand, ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents. But you would have all, all that's in the packet in this report here.
Okay.
When you get it.
Yes, is that tracked on? Ms. uh, Secuia? Ms. Secuia, I want one.
Yes, I am.
Okay, Ms., Ms., uh, Secuia, can you, uh, look, uh, in there? Don't we have some, uh, uh, accounts where we have, uh, that we put aside? It was, it was done in our, uh, the last time we did our negotiation. We had an account put aside for money to be used for, uh, emergency.
Money to be used for what?
We have an account, we had an account, appropriated account, put aside, where I think we had put like, uh, it was, uh, I think we, we had, we had a number in the budget, we had went through the budget, and it was in a line item that we had built up, uh, removed. We had put in a, a mountain, I had it from the last time that we had put aside that if something comes up like this here, that we could use it for, unless the mayor has, has moved that money. We had did that in the last week. The prior account.
I, I would have to know what account you're talking about.
Yeah, I can get it tomorrow.
I'm, you said account.
I, I can get it to you tomorrow to show you what, what we had, what we had put aside.
You, you give me the account number, and I'll check on it for you.
Okay, and then in the meantime, if not, could we pay for that out of our general fund account?
Yes, ma'am. The, the, the account that he's talking about using is the tipping fund, which is in the general fund. It's a general government account.
Okay.
And it, um, that, that's the account that they use for. It was used back when we actually collected garbage, and the city was collecting garbage, and it was budgeting. But because the city no more collects the garbage, um, they hadn't been using it. And so when they started to have to pick up this trash, they had to put it in the tipping fee. So that's the account that they're using.
Okay. So it will be there for them to use that, uh, to get the tip out from that he needs out of that?
Well, we'll probably have to take it out unappropriated.
That's what I'll.
Ms. Oliver, how much is in that particular account?
Um, the unappropriated?
Mm-hmm.
The one that you were speaking of, um, about, you know, the trash?
The tipping fee.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I think they have spent about thirty-five thousand, less than change.
Okay.
In tipping fees so far.
So, so, so we're up to forty-five thousand dollars for the garbage picked up this year?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
And if we continue to dump it, dump the trash, they will probably have to continue to use it. So we may need to put more money into it in order to cover it.
So we will have to look at that, uh, the meantime of, uh... Can I ask you something?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you planning on going back out in the, in the community? Because I know we got garbage. We said we got garbage on the street.
Well, um, I would, I have no other choice to do it, but what I was thinking about doing now from this point on, to keep from having to do this, is what this Oliver just stated. If you guys wanted done in your ward, then you need to go ahead and put some money in there before we do this, so we won't have to keep going through this over and over again, because I don't, I can't control how much it's gonna be, because I never know. Because I wouldn't have thought that I would have picked up a hundred and fifty-five tons of garbage in three days off the ground. And if you go out there and look, in some areas, in some of y'all wards, it's just about that much back down the ground again.
Yes. I mean, uh, dropping, no dumping.
And really, I cannot, uh, keep doing this, because I don't have the money to do it. So, you know, unless you guys give me some money to do that, we, I, I can't keep doing it, because I can't keep coming before you ask them for this amount, and no longer money's gonna come. And then once I take it out, once I take it out of waste management, they look for their money, you know? And that, and that is a part of the tipping fee. And we have to get that done, because we cannot, we cannot take anything like garbage out to the, uh, to the land scene. That cannot happen. A D M is already looking at that already, so.
So that's, uh, we're, we're, five hundred and half months into this budget here at forty-five thousand dollars. So we're looking at close to a hundred thousand dollars over the year.
If we keep doing it.
Yeah, if we keep doing it.
So when we talk about this garbage situation. See, a problem born that, yeah.
It's probably.
Yeah, we, I think we have spent up to sixty, sixty to sixty-five thousand. It just depends on whether or not the citizens dump it or not.
But can I ask you something, Mr. Hicks?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we have a code enforcement, they've been putting up signs, but, uh, let me tell you. In my ward, I just, I seen this, I ride every day. They don't put the signs up, but if the code enforcers out there, they need to be monitoring. Well, I'm, when I say code enforcement, I mean certified officer that who's qualified to be out there, needs to be on their go to catch this, to see, to stop this. Because if you got a, a no dumping sign, and right now in some of our areas, we got the signs up, but you go back and look, you got so much garbage that's piled up round the no dumping sign.
Well, Ms. Tom, uh, counsel, counsel, I'm, I'm gonna say this. Uh, you can have all the code enforcement officers you want. You can have certified officers, but until the mindset of our people changed, you can't lock everybody up for throwing garbage out on the street if you can't, because you can't catch everybody. And see, another, another thing too, we have to realize, a lot of stuff comes from Selma, but a lot of stuff comes outside of Selma as well. Because when you got these dumpsters around town, you can actually see people coming into town, putting dump, putting garbage in, other people's dumpsters. So I know places around town, businesses have to put chain on their dumpsters to keep people dumping gar, uh, garbage in. Counsel, my car, I can attest to this, and many of y'all can. You put dumpsters in your, in your ward. The dumpster's sitting there. You, a matter of fact, I came by your place on, on Church Street, picked up the garbage, the dumpster's sitting over in the field, and people didn't put the garbage in there.
I believe.
So, you know, it, it's a learning process that we gotta get out here and start knocking on doors, telling people that you cannot do this. You know, I mean, come on, guys, all of us got pictures and do this. No matter how, what we try to do, if people want to throw garbage out, they're gonna throw it out. And until we get everybody a can, everybody in this city needs a can. I can attest to this. When we had it before, when we came out with Curacao, we gave everybody a can, we did not have this problem. Because people, even if they wasn't paying the garbage bill, they were putting the garbage in the can, and rolling it to the street, and we picking it up. It wasn't scattered all over town. So this is a must. We gotta get everybody a can. Then, if you get everybody a can, then the code enforcement officers and everybody else can start monitoring and seeing why people not throwing stuff out. But if they ain't got no can, okay, I'm gonna ask y'all a question. Out of all y'all sitting on that council, if you don't have a garbage can at your house, what you gonna do with your garbage?
I want to put it out in the street. I want to put it out in the pool.
You gonna take it somewhere? You gonna take it somewhere?
But I want to put it out in the street, we know.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, that's one person out of a hundred. So what I'm saying is, what I'm trying to get you to see is, everybody needs that can, because all of us, if we got garbage in our house, we're not gonna let it stay there. We gonna put it somewhere, whether it's legal or illegal. We gonna put it somewhere. So, but that's enough about that.
But, uh, uh, so just to be clear, we're, we're gonna make the increase, Mr. Johnson, a lot of items, what you request, you know, Mr.?
Well, I don't know. We have to talk to Mr. Oliver about putting them a lot of items, because I don't, we don't have it in our budget, so I don't know where you, if you're gonna move some money, put it wherever they gonna. cause I don't, we don't have it in our budget, so I don't know where you, if you're gonna move some money, put it wherever they gonna, she wanna put it, so we can, if y'all want us to continue to pick up, so when we do, we won't have to come back, you have to add some more money to it.
Yeah, well, ju- just to pay this one bill, we're gonna have to at least increase that quite a lot of money.
Right, right. And so if y'all want me to pick up again, y'all let me know so y'all put some money somewhere and then I'll, like, I'll start picking it up.
Are there any, are there any more questions about that, about this? Thank you.
Okay, uh, I hope you're available, vote on that on Tuesday night. This.
No, but, um, can you check that K V?
Ma'am?
That K V.
He said that K V.
Oh, okay. Okay, uh, I'm gonna give that to him in that one over there. Y'all, if y'all have a chance to share that. We had a demo today, uh, Councilman Carmichael, I think you will be proud of. Uh, this is a sweeper. Uh, if you go outside in front of, uh, there you go, convention center and right on this side of the convention center and go down on the front where the gutters are, that sweeper came in and did a demo today and actually did a great job on it. So you saying you want the streets and you want the gutters cleaned out, I got a chance to get them cleaned out. All right. All right. Here we go. Here we go. Now, uh, the unit itself is a hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-three cent. But we're proposing a lease, a lease, uh, five-year lease and five annual payments of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty cent annually. Now, the great part about this is, I got this on a deal. It's a brand-new machine, the first time they demoed it was today, here itself. So I got, I'm getting it at a demo price. So, and the other second gr- great part about this is, I need a from, affirmative vote on it till tonight. We don't have to pay on it until next year, in next year's budget. So we can actually allocate the money in the next year, uh, budget to get the machine, but he's allowing us to come on and get the machine and we, we don't have it and we won't have to pay on it until the next budget cycle. And that's at the end of next year.
So maybe you can go get the machine?
Yes, ma'am. I, he could have left it today if y'all had have been here to say yes.
Well, we can, we're not.
No, I know, I know, but I, y'all would vote on Tuesday.
He's saying hypothetically.
Yeah, hypothetically, come on.
Had you already budgeted some, some money in your?
Uh, we own it in the next budget cycle, yes.
But you haven't already?
No, because I don't have to right now because I can get the machine without budgeting it right now.
Okay, and they gonna let you have that until?
Until the next budget, so, see, the annual payment don't come up until the end of the next year.
The end of next year?
Yeah, the end of the next bu- the fiscal budget year.
Okay.
In October, yeah. So I got it off, I got it moved out, so we can get the machine without having to pay anything upfront.
And you got the demo for you today so you could drive the price down?
It's direct.
Can you, the, I'm gonna write back to you later. Can you give us a, like, a figure of, did you, did you talk about how the annual payment would be?
Once, once you guys give me the okay, I can't see it, uh, I gave you a li- I gave you, uh, a breakdown.
Oh, okay.
But see, now, also keep in mind, once we, if, once we, uh, go into this contract, it's a five-year lease. We're not gonna do a balloon payment at the end, we're gonna just rotate the machine out. So we won't have to pay a balloon payment on it. Like, we normally, when we just say we gonna keep a machine, we got a big, a human, a, a payment at the end, we won't have that. All we'll do is just, a year before the, the fifth year's up, we'll start negotiating that contract to move that machine out and get a brand-new machine. And all we have to do then is continue to do, and we also have option of that two thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-three cent. We could do it monthly. We don't have to do it annually. But he said just, in, in order for us to get the machine, he would do the end of the year payment at this time. So if you wanna come back in next year and say, well, we gonna do it monthly, we could go ahead and do it, do it monthly as well. But the annual, uh, back to what you were saying, uh, Ms. Oliver can do this better than I can, we gotta pay the principal and the interest like we do on all our leasing programs.
The first time?
Yeah.
So, and like I said, we do need the sweeper, we need to sweep, sweep all of them cause we got, a lot of us have, often, like, we can clean those gutters out, I think we're gonna have all that going to be there.
Well, let me, let me say this to you as well. Uh, I have started a program, I got S I S, they came in, they're cleaning our storm drains. We're actually going in to clean the storm drains. Now, uh, Tella Bat is coming in, scoping all our, they're gonna start looking at scoping all our sewage lines. Uh, we got, y'all, y'all be, y'all be crazy to see what's going on on the ground, I mean, you really will. But we got a lot of wheels turning in Public Works, but when I come to you guys, I'm not coming just to be coming up here just to, just to blow off steam, I'm trying to get this stuff done. And the things that y'all asking me for, I'm trying to get the machine and work to do it with. And, uh, you know, it's no cost of money, but the way we doing it is actually saving us money. Because each lease program that I get, I'm, I'm putting in a maintenance piece with it. So we don't have to do all that maintenance, you know? Now, now, if the brush is just still wearing on the machine, yeah, we're gonna have to replace that. If a hole's break there, but if any major mechanical pieces that goes bad on that machine, the company's gonna take care of it, we won't have to do it. And at the end of those five years, most of the machine is wore out anyway. That's the reason we got a brain yard out there at Public Works now. And I do invite y'all to come out, come out to, to, to Public Works.
I came in a little bit.
Yeah, you was up, did you get a tool? Or you just came in home?
I just went in the office.
Okay, you didn't get a tool, okay, you got, I owe you a tool, okay? But, but guys, come out, let me show you what we doing. And I think you will be proud of seeing what Public Works is really doing right now. But this equipment is gonna change the, change the outlook of this city. When we get those little rats in, we get that back over here, all this stuff is coming, we got a side cutter on the way. Once this stuff get here, we get, get it out there and get it moving, you gonna see a totally different self. But it's just taking time because of COVID, a lot of, uh, the, uh, manufacturers have slowed down billing, so, you know? But as soon as, June, July, first of all, we should start seeing a lot of this equipment coming in. But we can get the sweeper as soon as you guys give me the okay on Tuesday. You know? And, uh, play, I got to miss with you. You been harping about your, about your cutters, we gonna start off with your guts, man. Yeah, that's what I'm talking, that's what I'm talking.
Uh, any other questions? Uh, is, is this in the budget plan? No, so this is on the, uh?
Yeah.
Okay.
We got it.
So this, this will be, and, and you're saying twelve months from receipt of the machine or from signing? Uh, this will be good?
Yeah, the next budget physically.
Yeah, well, see, I'm, I, you have a, a list of all our leased equipment, and that will be a part of the leasing program of everything that we leasing, and that will be added into there with that, with that amount for that year. So every lease program that we have, it will be broken down. I'll also take this to, uh, to, uh, the po- the pothole machine, it will be paid off next month. The last payment will be done on it like next month, so that piece of equipment we own, uh, I wish we had to do a lease on it, cause we could have got a new one, but thank God we got it, so we'll use it. But, uh, the last payment will be done in June on it, so that piece will be ours, but the rest of the stuff that we're getting, two to three-year leases is what we're doing.
Have you ever tried to give the other part to, order the part to the, uh, the pothole machine to do it right? Cause guys dropping it and they cutting it shit, you ever thought about that, that actually part?
Well, actually, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, we had the machine fixed, and, uh, once it, it worked about thirty minutes and, uh, it died in, so. Now we're looking at getting another one, so, you know, I'm trying to jump in my budget a little bit, see if I can find some money, maybe go ahead and get another.
Can, can you get more of those gas tankers?
Yeah, that's what we got.
Oh, that's true, yeah, okay, yeah.
That's what we got. We took it off, let a guy fix it and did the best he could with it, I think it just wore out. But I'm gonna try to find another.
So is that the one, does that, does that have a cutter on it or is that set? Where you put the hole, where the pothole is already, it's a kind of?
Oh, no, this is a pipe. What they're talking about is a pipe. When, when, once you put asphalt on the ground, it comes over the, the.
So do we have a cutter?
A cutter? Did you say cutter?
The, the machine that actually, so if you have a pothole and it's not all the way empty, how do you get the, um, asphalt or whatever out of the hole?
Uh.
To refill it?
Oh, you take a backhoe and do that.
So that's what we, we've been using?
No.
Okay, I was just wondering.
No, if, if, I think I know what you're talking about now. If it's a big place where we have to cut it out, we, we, we'll, we'll have to rent a saw, and we have a saw, and we call it a dollar cutter saw, and we cut it out and then we take the backhoe and we get out. And we'll refill it, refill it, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you. I hope we have, uh, y'all.
Since he's standing up here, um, I guess we need to just recognize that it is Public Works Week.
Yes.
And they have been doing an awesome job, and we, we really appreciate everything you do.
Also, I would like to thank Ms. Henderson and, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Thomas, they.
The whole council.
Oh, the whole council, yeah? You brought it, so I, I didn't know. But, no, Council, thank y'all so much for lunch today, we really enjoyed it. Uh, I didn't know I could eat that much pizza, I, don't say it to my wife, she's not supposed to eat that. We had a great time, thank y'all so much for it, and, and, uh, Ms. Henderson came out late on this afternoon and brought the dessert, so thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Henderson.
Okay, and I just wanted to apologize that you guys announced a regular agenda with a text. Um, that was, I have emailed it to you guys, you should have it now.
Okay, thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is for the treasurer. Ms. Oliver, do you have anything on court?
You know, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you. Nick will be attorney general, um, he has a table.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, um, Councilman Carmichael, ladies and gentlemen, Councilman Christie Thomas, Councilman Troy Hartwell, Councilman Atkins Jefferson, and Councilwoman Jenny Thomas. It's, I had a, uh, a legal eagle remind me some months ago, almost a year, actually a little over a year ago now, I think, that my job was to call balls and strikes. And because I always wanted to be more athletic than I actually was, I did play baseball and football. Uh, I was not great at it, but I did play them, and tennis, tennis is my really favorite sport. But I knew what he meant by balls and strikes because my dad was an avid baseball fan. And, uh, I learned to watch baseball, which I thought was the dullest game in the world, until I played it, till I actually got to play it. Played fast pitch softball for three years at Air Force, third base and shortstop. So I know what balls and strikes look like. Third base is the hot corner, I know what a, a blue daughter looks like, two coming down there screaming at you. Uh, the, the report tonight I have is, and, and, I'm not sure if you did get it because it was sent out too with the, uh, composite, the composite of the mayor's report. Uh, but it, it contained, uh, four items. I did hear something, um, tonight about, was it Bird Elementary, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yeah, Bird.
Yeah, uh, the, the reason, I, that's not on my record, but I wanna make a comment. I made a note when I heard that name. Uh, we have some, um, we had some eight to twelve public buildings damaged in Zeta. Uh, we're still getting paid from those claims. I've contacted the mayor as he directed me to, and I've contacted, uh, both Peak Insurance and Amex Senior Claims Manager about why it's taking us so long to get our money. We paid them premiums, remember? And five thousand dollars deducted every time there's a claim. The checks were dribbling in to pay us back. And several of us felt that that wasn't quite fair. So we've been, and I've been, the mayor and, and as the director, I've been in touch with both Peak and the general claims manager about, show us the money. I just wanted you to know that. Uh, but, but one of those buildings, I think, on that list of some eight remaining public buildings was Bird Elementary. I heard that a tree had fallen to the roof. I have not surveyed all of these properties, but I have been to some of them. I've been to Municipal Park, Block Park. I took pictures at Block Park when there was a portion of whatever that structure was on top of the stadium. Uh, well, I thought at first it was the press box, but it wasn't. I don't, I don't, I think it was the press box, I think it was, was it for a stand for a camera to film, to film the games? Yeah, yeah, well, that was blown mostly off of its moorings and was about to fall over at the top of Block Park Municipal Stadium. Two days, I think, or right around election time. That's where I vote, that's my polling place. But that wasn't what prompted me to get out, the, the director, uh, Mr. Jackson called, and the mayor said, go ahead. We got that taken care of right before the election, and to me, that's what this is about. It wasn't about just the work for the department heads and even the mayor and council. It was about the citizens of Selma. I vote there. Why, would I want a part of a stadium falling down on my head? I don't think so. So thi- this is what motivates me, I want y'all to understand that. Th- this the kind of thing that motivates me, helping the city of Selma. I'm the city attorney, not the council's attorney, not the mayor's attorney, but the city attorney. I, I love that role because it frees me up from being tethered to any one group. I love that, and, 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 and these buildings, I'm writing a letter tomorrow. I hope the mayor's not listening because he told me to write it before then. But I'm writing a, a letter tomorrow to Amick again, well, I didn't write my call. I'm writing a letter pointing out the same things I'm telling you, that we paid them good money, we paid them a five thousand dollar deduction, show us the money for the buildings that have been damaged. There was some talk about adjusters and getting quotes from contractors because of the vast amount of damage that had occurred around Zeta and, and that contractors and subcontractors in general are really busy now. And I, and I believe some of that, uh, cause I'm trying to get some stuff done in my house, I can't find somebody right away too. But, but we're going to get paid the money, and I found out yesterday when this came up, that actually two or three more checks, I believe, have come in. I think the clerk reported yesterday that two or three more checks had, had come in from Amick. So we're paying attention to the city's business and not just asking you all to spend money. I like bringing money into the city, and I think there, I know that other departments as well, attempting to do that. But, uh, my, the first item on my report is Resolution one forty-seven dash twenty slash twenty-one, citywide camera system. Uh, I heard a lot tonight about garbage. Uh, there's also a garbage initiative going on, which by the way includes trash and dilapidated vehicles. It's not just garbage, garbage, trash, and dilapidated vehicles sitting on a lot of people's property. All of that's gonna be covered in the, in, in, uh, the new orders that you get to review and pass upon and comment upon and, and modify if, if needs be, if you so desire. Uh, but Resolution one forty-seven dash twenty slash twenty-one is the citywide camera system resolution that's going to be, that is submitted for your review, discussion, questions, and hopefully Tuesday approval. The resolution is short, so if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and read it quickly. Resolution one forty-seven, R one forty-seven dash twenty slash twenty-one, resolution for authority to proceed with citywide camera system. Whereas the Selma City Council approves resolutions as in control of the finances and property of the city of Selma, Alabama according to code, to section eleven dash forty-three dash fifty-six, code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, seventy-five, and whereas the city of Selma enters into numerous and varied business transactions on a routine basis involving certain purchases or financial obligations, and whereas there is an express intent on behalf of the city council to utilize technology in an effort to assist the municipality of Selma, Alabama, in general and law enforcement and the courts specifically with combating crime, and whereas efforts have been and are being encouraged to assess the technological, logistical, practical, financial, the technological, logistical, practical, financial, and legal requirements of establishing a citywide camera monitoring system. And whereas the mayor and administrators have made initial inquiries necessary to pursue the execution of implementing plans for the citywide camera monitoring system, now therefore being resolved by the city council of Selma, Alabama as follows. That the mayor is authorized to proceed on behalf of the city of Selma, Alabama with the deployment of the citywide camera monitoring system and identify the appropriate funding source and account to recommend to the city council for further approval. That resolution boils down to two things. Can the worker here with implementing the system, we need to tell you how much this money costs and where the money is coming from for you to vote on. That's, that in essence is the resolution. Item.
Does anybody have a question about that?
Before we do this resolution, how, we need to know the, uh, the price of the, of, of the cameras. We need to know that before I, before I go on.
That, that kind of throws my mind too.
It's not even in there. It's not, no price in there.
The, the, the price is not in there because I was to gain, gathering additional information from Alabama Power. Actually, I brought it in here and don't see it right now. This should, this should be in your package that was sent out.
Sir?
This information I'm, I'm trying to pull up now should be in your package. It is.
The resolution?
No, I mean.
The, the, the actual.
I mean, I mean, there's an email, the, 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 that was an email with four attachments in it from Alabama Power. I think the gentleman's name is Jonathan Bazemore. I forwarded that email, uh, I should have had forwarded that email to you. I was looking for my, my secretary. Uh, the email that I should have forwarded, that was supposedly forwarded to you, contains each of the answers, the answers to each of your questions. Uh, it has, uh, Selma Police Department. I, I, I'll get it to you and, and I'm sorry, but.
That's fine. I'm, I'm, until, until we, you know.
Yeah. The, the, let me, let me give you the upshot. Let me give you the upshot of the cost. I'm giving you the upshot of the cost. Uh, it's, there's supposed to be something like fifty-four cameras, uh, six thousand dollars, uh, per month for forty-five of them and another twenty-two, twenty-seven hundred dollars for the other eleven. The eleven are license plate recognition cameras. The forty-some are, are monitoring cameras. And, uh, the total on an annual basis is about one hundred and eight thousand dollars. Uh, again, that was sent, at least I thought it was going to you already today, but I just got this information this morning is what I'm getting, late, late this morning. Yes.
So will you get that, will you get that figured to us?
Oh, 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 not only the figure, all the rest of this information I was about to, to share with you. Yes, ma'am.
Is there something that we can add?
Well, we're, we're considering this a single source contract because Alabama Power is providing not only the cameras, but they own the poles and the electricity. We're gonna have to get the electricity and the poles from them anyway. And, 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 uh, in talking with them, the discussions so far have tended to make that a recommendation that.
Of course, I'll, I'll, I'll make a recommendation.
No, 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 no.
And their cameras and everything else.
I, I, I get it. I get it. If I, well, if I make the same recommendation. But, but that's not what I was saying. What I was saying is the city's representatives are intending to make that recommendation, recommendation to the council. Uh, they're going to put the cameras up, monitor the cameras, uh, service the cameras, unlimited number of service calls, no additional calls, uh, and told.
Did you say monitor?
Yes. Yes. And, and, and provide monitoring service for the police department.
Oh.
Not, well, they can't arrest anybody, so of course the poli- the police department has to, has to, has to, uh, have access to the cameras. That's, this really, this really is a police department project. Selma Police Department. Uh, Chief Fullford, in conjunction, uh, with representatives of Alabama Power, have been in discussions about this for some time. I think he, uh, thi- this has pictures of locations that he's selected, he's recommending the cameras, where he's recommending the cameras to be placed. Chief, uh, Police, Chief Fullford. Uh, I don't, I don't know crime fighting at the city well enough to do that. He's, he's done that. He's been in discussions with them for a, a, a couple of months now, I think, a little bit over a couple of months. And what he's recommending is, this plan is a citywide, a plan that covers the entire city of Selma adequately to do the job. Oh, you. That's a lot of stuff. This is pictures. This is mostly pictures. I want you. There's other information. Because if they didn't hear it, it's.
Who's that? Um, my name is John. I'm the technical specialist that's been working with Chief Fullford, uh, and the mayor on this project and just wanted to, to clarify with the, Alabama Power would not be monitoring the cameras. The police department would monitor the cameras. Alabama Power has no access to the cameras at all. That footage would be owned by the city of Selma and not by Alabama Power. Thinking this is more like your city lights. So you guys pay us for the city lights and we own them and maintain them. The big difference is we do health monitoring on the cameras, so I light a light, which might be out for a couple of weeks before it gets repaired. We have health monitoring. As soon as we know that the camera's down, we typically have them back up within forty-eight hours. Uh, and, and, and like, uh, Mr. Madison had, had, had said, you know, all of the maintenance is on us. That is not on the city. Uh, all the security updates, because you have cameras nowadays, they're IP, uh, cameras, they're internet protocols. So they've got to keep up with the times for security patches and all of that. All of that is handled by Alabama Power. Uh, none of that falls on the city to have to do. And we currently have forty-three municipalities across the state, uh, that we've got cameras with. Uh, the license plate recognition cameras, uh, that Mr. Madison re- referred to, we've got over five hundred across the state that this would allow Selma's police department to be able to be part of that network as well. So if there were people that are, um, you know, suspects of, of crimes that might be coming from other cities into Selma committing crimes, this would give the police department the access to be able to, to team up with other agencies across the state. Uh, so just wanted to clarify, we don't monitor them. That would be done by the police department. Uh, but we do have the health monitoring, which is not video. We, we can't see the images. We can tell if there is connectivity, if the, if the camera is powered and connected or if it's not.
No, I have a question for, um, Mr. Bozeman.
Bazemore.
Bazemore?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Bozeman.
Bozeman, Bozeman, Bozeman. You're right, you're right.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Bozeman, can we get a list of the municipalities that, that have those?
Yes.
Can you get us a list of that? Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
And how many?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this a, I mean, is this a wired, is this on our fiber network? Where are these cameras? Are they wireless cameras? Are they wired access?
So there's a little bit of a mix there. Uh, we've got some of them that would be wired, uh, and some of the properties where we can actually get wires with. Most of them will be wireless. Um, though, uh, uh, the vast majority of those are wireless using point-to-point radios.
Okay. Which network is that on?
Uh, a couple of different ones. So we'll have a local network, um, for the cameras to talk, and then they'll go to a router. Uh, it'll be on, the cellular ones would be based off of the city's, um, AT&amp;T FirstNet. And then the, the local ones would also be with, uh, Spectrum.
Spectrum. You, you said Spectrum and who, or is it FirstNet?
Is, is there a, uh, other battery backups and Wi-Fi backups? So, I mean, would it be, would it be able to, if Spectrum went out, uh, uh, with another, uh, would there be a backup plan that it can swap over to? Or how does that, how does that work?
No. So if the internet goes out, we do have dual redundant C as far as reporting. So if we record local and once the internet came back up, it would push the information back to the server automatically. Um, but if it lost power, I mean, it, it's out. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be like pretty much everything else.
Right. And, uh, do we have bulletproof lips as always?
I'm serious, that's a serious question. So, I, 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 I hear you guys laughing about that. No, they do not. Um, so I've, I've been doing cameras with southern companies since twenty sixteen. Between Georgia Power, Alabama Power, Mississippi Power, we've got well over five thousand cameras deployed across the states. We've had less than ten shot since twenty sixteen. If it doesn't happen, I don't.
Good question. I, I only laugh because I know they ask the council.
Yeah, well, I mentioned.
And I know they have to ask it, so.
Thank you. Are there any more questions about the cameras? I'm sorry, I'm just, give me just a second to revisit this.
Okay. That's fine. That's fine. I told you. I told you there were two of them.
This is, this is not the, uh, the thing we have up, right? The plan or whatever? Okay, all right, I'm in the two sheets.
The one with police, Selma Police Department on the front? No, it's, there's one, there's one copy being passed around.
Okay, all right. Yeah, you're gonna get all that to us in the, the email?
Yes, sir. It's, it's already neatly in an email from Mr., uh, Bozeman to me, and I just, I, I, and I was about ninety-nine point nine percent sure it'd already been forwarded to you, but I'll do that. I'll do that. I'll do that. It's not a problem. It just takes a couple of clicks. I, I'll reset it.
Thank you. Everybody getting ready forward? Well, we'll, we'll have to revisit this. I'll, I'll. All right, go ahead.
Uh, and, and I was forwarded, forwarded a thing to invite Mr. Bozeman to speak, but didn't remember he was there. Yeah, thank, thank you for that too. The next item on, on my, uh, report is item number two, regular mortgage satisfaction. This is a one-page document. I was informed that the vote had already been taken on this action, but that you had not had the actual document drafted. Uh, this should have been in your package too. If not, I will make sure that's forwarded tomorrow. It was sent along with my, my, uh, my report to the council. This is a one-page document, a mortgage satisfaction to, to memorialize the action already taken. Uh, item number four? You got my report? You got my report?
Juneteenth.
Um, item number four is a, is a Juneteenth ordinance, which also was reviewed last year. And, uh, the Juneteenth holiday ordinance that was reviewed and I thought already voted upon. Uh, but the clerks reassured me that it was only placed on first reading. Uh, so it has to be revisited for the purpose of voting. Uh, it also was presented in the same form with the exception of three basic guidelines. Number one, the ordinance number will change obviously to oh, one, oh, five, dash twenty slash twenty-one. Uh, the date of enactment, establishment is June the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, not twenty twenty. And the list of signatories to the resolution, or to the ordinance rather, would be the different council persons who are now, who now constitute the, uh, city council. Yes, ma'am.
Can you make sure they have, uh, secretary, a lot of this stuff that we have, we have.
Yeah.
Emails, if we can just, if we can make, I'm just getting partial, like these, some of this that you're reading, we only got like three or four documents from you. Uh, if we can request, can we get an email and also just place hard copies in their boxes of everything, because they, they look at it. Some stuff we're getting, some stuff we're not. I, I got this from you, this from you, this is, this is like a reword, like the Juneteenth you're talking about. They, I don't think they got that ordinance, because I sent you back an email and told you it was no attachment to it.
I'd be glad to put hard copies. Give, give you the hard copies of that place in their boxes.
You can put them in boxes. Y'all can put them in the boxes. That way it comes.
And still send you the electronic.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's not a problem. As a matter of fact, I prefer communicating through the administrative system. Both ways. I think I asked for it the last time. That if you would let me know through the administrative system, then your request would be coordinated and my responses would be coordinated through the same person. And, and we should all have a, a, a better flow of communications. Uh, but I would be more than willing to do exactly what, uh, what Ms. Ellison has requested. Place a hard copy.
Requesting documents, I, I'm, uh, I have the resolution and after all that, I'd like to send you.
Sure.
Uh, about, about documents and get it all, um, from me.
Okay. I'm in the end stage. Okay. Well, see, that's, I know, she's gonna have everything. The fourth item is the Resolution for Historic Development Commission. And that resolution was presented previously, uh, not by me, but it was presented previously. It's, I got it. Same one. It's, uh, Resolution R. one thirty-eight dash twenty slash twenty-one. Appointments to fill vacancies on the Selma Historic Development Commission in accordance with City of Selma Code of Ordinance Division eighteen. Uh, I think Councilman Carmichael also sent, uh, some information you did about the statute. And, and I read that information and actually, uh, read it and discussed it with, with several people. Some other people in, in the, uh, the administration. That ordinance, uh, according to the twenty nineteen Code of Alabama is eleven, dash sixty-eight, dash three. Composition of the commission, nomination of the members, terms of office removal, vacancies, offices, rules, reimbursement of expenses, personnel, annual report and meetings. And for purposes of discussion with the council, I thought, and, and was directed to, uh, the first two or three paragraphs in the, in main, in the main. One of which, the first paragraph points out what the constitution number and type of member there is who should have demonstrated training, seven members who should have demonstrated training or experience in the fields of history, architecture, architectural history, urban planning, archaeology, or law. Or who shall be residents, or, or who shall be residents of an historic district designated pursuant to that ordinance. Members of the commission shall be bona fide residents of the territorial jurisdiction of the municipality creating the commission. Uh, the territorial jurisdiction of the municipality is a term of art. I take that to mean the city members plus the police jurisdiction thereof, unless somebody qualifies otherwise. Unless statute or legislative intent qualifies otherwise. Members of the commission, and I just read that, not more than one-fifth of the members of the commission shall be public officials. Uh, I don't know why they picked one-fifth of seven. That has an interesting number. Uh, but not more than one-fifth of the commission shall be public officials. Members of the commission shall be nominated, this is paragraph B of that statute. Members of the commission shall be nominated by the chief executive officer of the, of the municipality creating the commission and appointed by the legislative body of that municipality. Nomination and appointment of members of the commission shall be made so as to ensure that the commission will be composed of persons with as much of the training and experience specified in subsection A of this section as is possible, the section. of this section as is possible, the section from which I read previously. Paragraph C, except for the original members of the commission. Members of the commission shall serve three-year terms and shall be appointed in such a manner so as to serve overlapping terms. And it's, it's other than the original members, because the original members' terms were staggered so that everybody would not roll off the commission at the same time, which is not at all unusual for boards or commissions. And then the other paragraphs cover removal of members for calls by the legislative body of the municipality creating the commission. Vacancies on the commission shall be filled by persons nominated by the chief executive officer of the municipality creating the commission and appointed by the legislative body of that municipality. Such appointments shall be for the unexpired term of the member replaced. I think those were the, the, the sections in the main that were being, uh, discussed the last time. Appointment originally, nomination and appointment originally versus nomination. And there was another term, because I don't know if I want to mention it, but this statute standardizes those terms.
It was appointed and hired or?
Right. There was a different term used for the council action in both, both, in both the original naming of members and the replacement of members. And, and, and I think that gave several of us pause. I, it gave me a little pause when I first wrote it, because I don't know why. But, but the, the other point is, the statute authorizes the creation of an ordinance, and this body creates. Right. Well, you, you have an ordinance, and, and the question is, what condition is it in? And how well does it serve this city and this council and the, uh, the, uh, the commissioners of the board, the members of the board?
And is it up to date with the two thousand nineteen state statute?
Right.
That's the biggest question.
Right. Well, the discussion was necessary that we're having right now, is the point. And the action of this body is what's next. What you're, what, the mayor has already nominated people. The question is, what do you do with those nominations? That's the real question.
Do we need to see the other, do we need to look, do we need to look at the ordinance that we already have in place?
Well, this statute is, is the genesis of any ordinance. This statute, state statute trumps the ordinance. That's what I think Councilman Carmichael was pointing.
If there's only about a day or about an ordinance, then, then the resolution should be in order.
Well, you can, you can update the ordinance without a resolution, but you can't update the ordinance without an ordinance.
Right.
So we maybe don't have to have the.
I don't think you need a resolution, I think you need an ordinance.
I think a resolution for the, for the members of the, to nominate the appointed members of the commission.
Resolution's already been presented.
I know, and I'm saying, we need to update the government. And then have a new resolution to be presented according to the update.
If that's the will of this body, that's the will of the body.
Because our parry code is not in line with the state statute.
That's right.
I mean, that's, you can clearly see.
I think we said the same thing, though. You can't update the ordinance without an ordinance, but you can update it without a resolution.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I think we need to update our local historic development. And, and then, and then move forward with the resolution nominating and appointing.
As the expression goes, I serve at the pleasure of this body and the mayor and the citizens themselves.
Thank you, Madison.
But that's, that, that's the extent of my report. I think that last item, I covered the first, the last item first because of what came up in your citizen rec, citizen comments about the claims. I wanted you to know that there are claims for the damage to the building. We're not just sitting around tooling our thumbs, money's being collected. I would like to see it collected faster, but so would the mayor, and I'm pretty sure so would you. So we're working on that, too. I believe I said.
Are there any more questions, Attorney Madison?
I do. Attorney Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I know you didn't have it on agenda, but I have a request, you know, I want to move forward with, uh, you looked at, I, I think every council have received the, the three opinions from the Attorney General. Everybody look at those three opinions from different years of the Attorney General?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey, have you seen? Are you pleased, are you, you understand, I'm saying, you understand why?
I need, I need to look at them further.
I just want to, because I was going to put a motion tomorrow for Tuesday.
Okay.
And definitely I wanted to, uh, make sure that we all understand the three, because we got people that are on this body of the council that, uh, their own business. We are members on this body of the council.
You said three, and I was like, that was like five or six, I think. Turned Jeff Daniels.
Yeah, the ones that I, I requested for.
Right, that was, that was, that was seven. More than, more than three.
Oh, he gave you five.
I got five or six.
Okay, that's good, definitely not the same.
But they're on the same topic.
They're on the same thing.
They're on the same topic.
That's right, okay. All right. That's what I wanted to clear. Because I want to get rid of old business, I don't like old.
And, and my suggestion was, you take more time to read them, and then I would be glad to answer the questions.
And, and I would prefer not to moderate the meeting, but we discuss that.
I think that's just why.
That's what I wanted to. Okay, that's why I asked you.
So we just take that.
Okay, okay, all right.
All right, if there are any more questions, I'm, I'm finished, mark this mark for.
Thank you, Attorney Madison.
You're welcome.
And Councilwoman David Thomas?
Yeah, I got one, you can rest today.
I can't get off that easy.
Well, they couldn't.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
And, and I want to make this clear, because this come out of our own ordinance. This come out of our own, this is our own code ordinance for the city itself. And I noticed that they, uh, they did something different, and they updated this on March the fifteenth of twenty-twenty-one. We had, uh, I have a citizen, the reason why I put this on here, I have a citizen, uh, has some issue. He was, uh, uh, Mr. Wilson was a, uh, he's been a, uh, garage owner for his, uh, car shop for sixty, sixty-three years. And, uh, I know we have, uh, according to our own, uh, ordinance, uh, code that we have in, uh, in the book. It says that to be a code officer, you must be professional, need two or five years of work experience. And we do have some people that, that have been on, on, on this code office, out here, within the code office, have been in, have some experience. But it says that we must, and they must be within the public service of code enforcers of local government to require for code enforced office jobs. That means that we have, um, we just got a new man. We, we, we have, uh, Mr., Is he on? Is, is that Nick Code Enforcer on?
Who are you referring to, counsel?
I think she referred to Mr. Sanders.
The man that we, that, that y'all hired for code enforcement?
No, he's not, I was my word.
Huh?
I don't think he's on the, I don't think he's.
I don't want her to think, make serious wrong.
Was the response, he's not on, uh, Mr. Taylor?
You said Mr. Sanders?
Mr. Sanders.
No, I just, I don't see him, I don't have a Sanders.
He's the new, uh, what? Yeah, he's, he's the code, he's, he's the code enforcement. Uh, he's the officer, he, he's, he's.
I, I am on you.
Oh, okay, well, I'm.
Can you tell the council who you are?
Can you repeat, because it's so much, I don't understand what y'all say.
Okay, we're talking about the new, the new, uh, code enforcer for the city of Selma?
Uh-huh.
His name?
Mr. Johnny Sanders.
And Mr. Johnny Sanders, uh, he was, he's a, uh, code enforcer, could you tell us a little about it?
You say he's code enforcer of what now?
He's the code enforcer for the city of Selma?
Yes.
Could you tell us a little about him?
Well, he's a retired officer from, uh, Lamas County. He's A four certified, uh, he's an, he's an A four certified extra chair for thirty-eight years. Then he retired from Lamas County, so now he's working with us part-time.
Oh, he's part-time?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Uh, come on, continue. Well, I, I, I'm glad you, I want you to hear this, what I pulled this up. It says that, um, you were on when I was reading, uh, Mr. Henry?
I can't, I mean, it's, it's so much echo, but go ahead and read it again, I'm listening.
To be a code officer, you must be professional and need two to five years of work experience. Within public service, code enforcers of local government to qualify for code enforced officer job. You might start gaining experience by getting an intern level position as constructed working with police officers. And they put this in, in our own, uh, in our own code book. It was put in March the fifteenth of twenty-twenty-one. And the reason why we have, I'm bringing this up, we have a, uh, we had a couple citizen complaint. Now, we have a, a person that's been working in, uh, for the city, under the code officer, that, uh, she's been, been here for over, over two-year period. But then we have a new one that's come in, that, uh, we had an, uh, incident where Mr. Brett Wilson, he was here, he stayed long as he could stay, because I had it on here. They went on his premises, uh, the day, we need to know the timeframe. They went on his premises to his home, and, uh, they were in the house, but they put the notice on the door. And then, that was Tuesday. And then Wednesday, um, the new person that the city hired out here were sitting in, uh, in front of the, the Wilson home. And Ms. Wilson called me and told me that, um, she came out and, um, the code, the person, she's not a code officer, I can't call her a code officer, because she's not certified. I don't know what y'all classification right now, but.
Ms. Trump?
Let, let me finish, don't, no, let me finish what, what I'm talking about. Let me finish, and then you can, you can finish yours. The incident was that it caused a big conflict. They moved his vehicles that he were working on, uh, he had on a trail. They moved his vehicles and hauled him away, and, uh, he was at the doctor's today. And he did not have the stickers, he's, he lives in my neighborhood, we're neighbors. He did not have orange stickers on his car till this morning. They put those orange stickers while they were going to the VA doctor. And, uh, another neighbor in the neighborhood, we looked out for each other, and they called him at the doctor's office and told that they were towing his vehicles away. And he called me and said, Jane, get you go to the house and see what's going on. So I did go to the house, and, uh, and I called him, I said, well, your trailer gone, and your Trans Am that you were working on is gone. And, uh, a few minutes later, the tow truck come back again. And the tow truck was finna pull the other vehicles that he was working on. And I called Attorney Madison, because Mr. Wilson was very upset, and he said that he was going to be no more attorney, because he has his license as a mechanic for sixty-three years, and they shouldn't have moved his, his vehicles unless he was notified or talked to. And, uh, I told, gave phone to the man that he just hired. Uh, he talked to Mr. Madison, and Mr. Madison told him, you know, let's leave that and let's, let's, let's give him the chance to, uh, whatever. So Mr. Wilson came before because he wanted his, his vehicles back. He wanted his, uh, there are ninety years, there are, uh, people cars that he worked on. So, uh, that's why I was saying that, um, when we as the body of the council, when we make, uh, ordinance and put policies and stuff in place, and when, when it's in our code book that required for us to have a code officer, which we did have before, they were two-part time. But when we hire employees that are not trained, or not have a qualification, cannot go out and act as a code officer, because they are not law involved, law enforcers, and they have not received any certification to say that they can go out and, and, and do this to, to the citizen. And this is why you have, uh, uh, several complaints, even about basketball goal. People are being, uh, calling about basketball goal, their kids play basketball. The person is out talking to them, telling them they got to take the basketball goal and put it, it's portable. It's a portable basketball goal, and the kids play with it, they puts it out in the street. And, uh, you know, the citizen in, in my ward have, get complaints like that, and they get upset. They call the, their council person, which I am the council person for Ward seven. And when, when the constituents call, and I look on them, and I told them, what we need to do is to make sure that we don't have ourselves in a situation where you're going to have a lawsuit, with some of these people getting upset that we have people that are working for the city that are not law, are not certified as code officers that we have in our requirements there. They, they're not, they haven't been A four certified. You have a part-time A four certified. When you say part-time, how often do you mean to hear work? He'll work three days, two days? And we have two employees here working?
My turn?
Go ahead, Ms. President.
Okay. Um, first of all, Mrs. Sewell and Mrs. McGee have just as much authority as anybody else. Uh, the only thing they can't do is write citations. They have the authority to investigate all code violations, point blank, period. Uh, as far as the Mr. Wilson situation, we have been speaking with each other. Uh, so I'll just leave that, that, uh, because I spoke with them, we are, we're working things out. Mrs. McGee, as far as I'm concerned, ain't doing anything wrong. So she has the authority to do that.
Attorney Madison?
She just can't write citations, the only thing she can't do. She has the authority to enforce the code violation.
Attorney Madison?
I mean, I bet, it, it's simple as I can put it. And I have to speak with Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Wilson.
When Bozeman was here tonight, that he wanted to come before the attorney. Mr. Wilson was here tonight.
I talked to him right, I talked to him right this morning, uh, Councilwoman Thomas.
Well, they were here tonight, they were here.
So I know, I want to discuss that publicly. I'm giving that with them.
And I want to encourage you not to discuss it publicly, too.
Well, I'm going by, uh, as, as a representative of this, this city, not only for just Mr. Wilson or anyone else, that when we have stuff on the book, Mr. Mr. Stevens is just a department head, and he works for the city. I am on the legislative branch. When we have code and ordinance on the book, and the people start complaining, and he said they have justice privileges right, and if we are not being careful with our ordinance and code on the book, we could end up with a lawsuit.
Well, I, I, I. We understand that, and we had a, uh, you know, take precautions for that, but there was nothing wrong, she can enforce that. I mean, if you call me and put in a work for, for a trash guy, there's no difference in her going out there seeing.
And but, but we are, we are that, that, of the branch she is in, boy. She works for the city of Selma, and you are her supervisor.
Council, council.
It's a different, in a different branch. We don't work for, uh, we work for the citizen of the city of Selma, under the legislative branch. We don't, uh, work for the mayor, to represent the city of Selma, Mrs. Stevens.
I got this.
Let, may I? Let's hear from Attorney Madison and Councilwoman.
Mr. Andrew, Mr. Andrew, Mr. Andrew.
Mr. Hendrick, Mr. Hendrick, Mr. Hendrick, Mr. Hendrick. Mr. Hendrick, we're having a running discussion in a work session that I would prefer, A, to be given an opportunity to further investigate. I met Mr. Sanders today for the first time. I've talked with him on the phone at the site of the matter at issue because I did not know who was there. I wanted to find that out. He and I believe the code enforcement individual that you're referring to were subsequently in my office some less than an hour after, after that event. I would prefer to review the code section on the matter you brought up. I, I'm a pretty intelligent person, but I don't know the code by heart. I can't recite it verbatim. But I would be more than willing to review that code section. What I was saying about any discussions going on between Mr. Wilson and Mr. Hendrick, I would prefer that not debated in public. That's all.
Well, I, can I say this, Mr. Uh, when you are called, I, I am representative for Ward Seven, not Mr. Hendrick, not, uh, Mr. McGee. When I represent Ward Seven and we got codes on the book and when my, when my citizens knock on my door and come make a complaint about what the code say and we have people that are working for the city right now, he could say, uh, she can be a code officer or by law, she is not a code officer. By law, by the language in, that's, that's in here, she is not a law officer to enforce anything. You cannot enforce a law if you are not a police officer and you have been to train. I have talked about this with the Alabama League of Municipalities. And I have tried to reach the mayor through Ms. Dunn to let, let them know that not only me been watching this law, other citizens have looked up the same thing. So when you come, when you have an employee going out acting as an officer, as a code enforced officer and not certified, no training, no training period and you out here handing out literature, talking about the law and you don't know what you got on the, on the law of the city of Salem, I think, Madison, I think you need to look at that.
Well, I'm saying the same thing. I'm asking you time to do this.
Let's allow Attorney Madison some time and, and it sounds like a pretty big deal, so we're not gonna...
This particular problem come up today and...
Mr. Carmichael, can I just say one more thing and I'm gonna be done. I wanna move on, uh, and I do too. Uh, all I wanna say about, I understand what she's saying about certified. Just look at Mrs. Sewell and Ms. McGee as the person who's pointing out the violations to the person that can do something about it. We didn't have someone who knew something about it, but now we do. So she's bringing that to Mr. Sanders' attention. He, that's why he is on site when these cars are being towed and these different things are being done because she is the one that's pointing that violation out to him. So now we do have someone that can, uh, take care of that situation, so that's what we do. Uh, I mean, that's...
I understand. And I, and I appreciate y'all taking that situation.
Leading the person that can do it to the situation.
And, and today was my first time laying eyes on Mr. Sanders. We had not even met before. I did not know who he was till he got there. Unfortunately, it came about our meeting.
Yeah, he's only been there two days. He's only been there about two days. He came on Tuesday.
Okay. And, and I'll ask for his more time to do further investigation.
Okay, good.
And report back to this body.
Good, thank you. I appreciate that.
And, and by the way, Councilwoman Thomas, you called me. What happened?
You, you took that?
Okay, so, so what I'm saying...
And I'm just saying that you, that you are, you are a city attorney. People don't understand that just because they work for the city and they are supervisor of the department head of the city, but you got to understand that when we got stuff on the book that we done put up there and agreed to, we have to, we have to go back. And if you come to me or citizen to point something to me that we already got put on there ourselves, I have to follow according to what is on the book.
And, and there is the matter of there being three branches of municipal government, one of which is executive branch. There's a court structure too,
Yes.
which can call me to task if I'm wrong.
Right.
And can hold a statute or an ordinance invalid.
Yes.
So we all, we all have to be sure that we're on solid ground. Sometimes we're right, sometimes we're not right. But that's why I asked to talk with the person who was there and he landed on the phone and we discussed this. I would be more than willing, am more than willing to look at that and partners, tell you what I can see about it.
Well, that's all I want, that's all I want you to do as our attorney, that when we have,
Agreed.
we have a ordinance on there and what the ordinance say. I'm not talking about what he say or what they say, as the legislature. I'm talking about what...
Agreed. Now, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna move on with that. Wait, wait, wait. Are you finishing your business side?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, my next, uh, item is, uh...
Drainage?
Yes, drainage.
That's not me, that's not me.
Not you, he gone. But anyway, I might as well if he's on, uh, there, they here. He's gone, but, uh...
Can I sit down?
Well, well, you can sit down.
Well, but, but what I'm getting, what I'm getting at is this is not directed to me as attorney.
It's not directed to you. I have a situation in my ward, uh, of houses in, uh, LA Anderson. I have a family that's been, uh, without, uh, operating, uh, flushing and it's been a minute and, uh, yes. They've been bringing it out in the community and, uh, I've, I've been working on this, trying to get this taken care of. Uh, that's too long for this family to be doing this. Uh, they need to, uh, we have engineers, uh, that know this problem has gone on for the last couple of years and, uh, now it has come to the point that, uh, it's affecting the community to become safer, uh, it's a hazard. I need to, that's why I wanted to bring this up, so we need to, uh, take care of this immediately. And that is my last question.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Carmichael?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I did not finish the American report. He had two items on her head. One announcement and then, um, Lisa did not get the chance to update the code.
I apologize. Please...
No problem. I didn't realize she had moved on to the agenda items. I just looked at her, um, looked at your agenda and realized that you guys didn't have...
I apologize. Um...
No problem.
Can, can we finish up, Ms. Thomas, right quick and then we'll go back to you? Does, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Thomas, business items? Okay. Please, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Ms. Russell, do you have a thing to cover?
Yes, I do. Uh, thank you, um, Dawn and, um, good evening, counsel. Um, Mr. Carm, uh, Councilwoman Carmichael, who's providing for designing. I first of all, wanted to thank the mayor and, um, Vice President Philly Young for yesterday, uh, for show, showing a joint front, uh, in the, the fight against COVID. And so I really do want to thank, thank them for the press conference. It, uh, it was really good. It went really, really well. So thank you for that. Uh, the press conference basically centered around COVID-nineteen protocol and the opening, the reopening of our public building. Uh, but I want to tell you a little bit about, uh, what's going on with cases. Uh, since yesterday, we've had four COVID cases and, um, so we are wanting to truly focus on our individuals, our citizens, uh, making sure that they are getting the vaccine. We are showing a population of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-six individuals in Dallas County. At this particular time, people receiving at least one dose of the vaccine is twelve thousand and fifty. The percentage of people receiving at least that one, uh, one dose is thirty-two point four percent. Uh, people who have completely completed the doses are eight thousand, eight oh one and the percentage of those individuals are twenty-three point six six. Uh, so what we're asking is our citizens to please get on board, uh, to take the shot. If you have not taken the second vaccine, that you please take that second vaccine. There will be some more clinics, uh, being provided and some things that we're going to do to be happy to, uh, get our citizens, uh, citizens more motivated to take the shot. We do realize that, um, twelve and above now have been approved to take the vaccine and that we, uh, most of our, um, pharmacies and the health department, the hospital are, are giving the vaccine. So thank you so very much for allowing me to bring you that information and again, thank, uh, you are having a good evening. Thank you, Dawn.
No problem. And the one thing you did mention is we have those yard signs. We have, we have those books. So they're free. Staff ones, it was about this.
And they're, they're just promoting the vaccine and this is a statewide campaign, uh, from, um, the, um, Black Mayor's Conference. So we're asking as you leave out the door tonight, to please take a sign and place it in your yard. Uh, and if you have to take the vaccine, please take the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, and thank you, Ms. Taylor. I apologize to y'all for leaving you out.
No, no problem. Miss, the last announcement I'm complete with his report. Um, if any council members have any city-owned equipment, can you guys please, um, turn that in to the appropriate department? And that would be like lawn, uh, the, the...
We, I ain't got lawn. They, they, he got the boots. They started lawn mower that I paid for.
If we have any lawn, city-owned equipment?
Any city-owned equipment. It was lawn equipment.
Why would I have any city-owned equipment?
We don't have any.
We don't have any.
Okay. All right, they concluded the mayor's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
No problem.
All right, and we are gonna move on to, uh, Councilman Randolph, Jazz on Grass. What do you got? Take off?
He's got that.
Okay, all right. Uh, Councilwoman Alicia James, you wanna go ahead and we can come back to Councilman Randolph?
Yes, sir. Um, I think my first item was, um, about the, the, uh, property on Dawson. Um, I have been getting complaints that we have been, somebody have been sending uh, one tenant letters constantly and sending it to the wrong person. But we have some, we have, uh, a building on the side of Dawson where it's abandoned. And I think that those letters supposed to go to that tenant, but we've been sending letters to another, uh, person that owns the larger man. And so I'm trying to get to the bottom of who we need to give the letters to. I think the, I think the clerk had been sending letters to, uh, somebody else and he's getting very upset, saying that his, uh, tenant is very upset and he's losing business because he feel like he being harassed. So I'm trying to see, uh, what we need to do about, um, checking who owns that, that property. Because if you turn on the side of Dawson, you see a whole lot of abandoned, uh, uh, buildings where they used to have different offices there and it looks really bad. The doors are kicked in and I'm afraid that someone just go in there. I know we have people sometimes go in there, go to sleep, but I don't want to shout, anybody to get raised anything in that particular area because all the doors and windows are knocked out. And I'm trying to find out exactly who own that property so we can send the letters to the right people. If anybody can, uh, um, Ms. Lee, uh, I think the last person had something to do with was maybe, uh, he stated that clerk had sent him some letters. Ms. Ivy, is you on?
I don't know.
I don't know, Ms. James.
Okay, well...
Ms. Lee, I can tell, uh, she's like a lady woman.
Okay, please do so.
If you know, I'm listening to James, I'd tell you right now.
We thought the, the properties were all pretty much like one property. But as we were doing research, we found out that different parts owned by different people, so, uh, a couple of people that owned those properties have sold some of it in the past few months. So he's getting wrong letters because his name hasn't been changed down on the county record. So we only go by group names on county record. That's why he's been getting letters. But he sent me the information of the people he sold it to, but I can't change, you know, the county records or send it to a different place. I just go by what's on that county, uh, you know, record book. But I did make note of that and he sent some to Mr. Ivy, uh, along with a few other people that are getting letters that they should, they, you know, feel that they should get. But we have a couple of them that send their lawyers to go down to the courthouse to change the door with these. I mean, it just, mine and stuff like that, like these might have been changed though, or the person that they sold it to hasn't gone down to change the deed. So that's why they're getting letters that don't support.
Okay, so what I need to, if he contacted you, I need to let him know that he need to go change things that, with the count.
Well, they need to do what, you know, on their end, because we're, we're doing all the websites. The only, only thing we can go by is what's on the website. If they call us and tell us we don't own it anymore, I mean, I understand it, but until it get changed on the website, I mean, that's all we can do is go by what's on the county website.
Okay, but, but what can we do to that? What can we do at this point to, you know, to make that building safe?
Uh, it's on the list as a matter of fact. Uh, I think on the, the left of that list. So once it goes through the process, it could either get torn down or the person, um, can choose to repair it. It depends on what the owner too. And if he doesn't do anything, then we'll just tear it from there.
Okay, thank you so much because I, I really want to take care of that because that, it is on one of our main streets and, and the safety of our people is really a big concern and plus the look of it is just terrible. Okay, thank you for that and I'll share that back with him. I think my next item was drainage, uh, the system that's... And Mr. Hicks, are you still on?
He's never over with us.
Okay, I, I, we, uh, Mr. Randy that's at, at the, uh, corner of, uh, uh, St., uh, Singleton Drive and I think that should probably be Earl Goodwood Parkway. He, uh, he said that he's had made several, several reports on the drainage system. So every time it rain, it just flood his whole place out. And he just wanted to know what can we do to help him out? So I told him I will, uh, discuss it with Mr. Hicks and maybe someone can go, either the engineer. I asked the engineer before to, uh, look into it and make a ray. That maybe I can meet you out there and we can see exactly what Mr. Randy is discussing. If anybody, if Ray is on, if Ray, if you not on, somebody get the word to Ray because he's constantly saying that this problem, and I think I brought this problem up, uh, maybe about two or three months ago for, uh, uh, for the engineer to check with me on that and also on, uh, Lauderdale. I haven't got any answers back on from Ray with Lauderdale Street. And I just want to know what's the process that we have to do when we ask for these things and it don't happen? Because the citizens come back and say, we are not discussing or we are not doing what we need to do, which we reported, but engineer don't show up. There's nothing we can do. So we need to hold everybody accountable that have part of it. So if we can get, get the word back to Mr. Ray, I, I'm willing to meet him out there and talk to Mr. Randy and see what's going on because I have reported this at least three times. And I think that's the end of my report.
Councilwoman James, I'll get this message to Mr. Ray Hall for you. And in the future, yeah, in the future, when things like that happen, if you would just call me in the office and just give me a update on what's going on, I'll send me an email and I'll just...
Yes, ma'am, but I, I, uh, um, Ms. Ellison does a great job. She had reported three times, but I will, if you passes on Ray, he knows my number and I'll definitely meet him out there.
Okay, no problem.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you have anything else on my report, uh, Councilwoman Carmichael?
Okay. No, that's it. Just the two.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Councilwoman James? Okay, uh, on to Councilman Jemison.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, President. Yeah, uh, I, I think this directed to the mayor, but maybe the city attorney can help down Mr. Madison. Those dirt bikes and four-wheelers and AVTs and the go-karts that's built on city streets. You know, kids riding around, they have no helmets on, no kind of pass or structure for safety purposes. And a couple of citizens directed to me saying that they, um, maybe almost ran over one coming out of the parkway and they didn't see the, the go-kart behind them. Just so happened they look, looking down and seen it and stopped them from having a, a major accident like, uh, uh, I'd just like to know what a procedure is for, you know, those type of vehicles. I just like to know what a procedure is for, you know, those type of vehicles on the city streets just running around. I mean, I, I, it's in my ward, but I know it's, maybe it's a lot of other wards.
It's a lot of wards.
Yeah, so I, I'm speaking to everybody. So, trying to figure out, you know, uh, what's the, what's the, how, how can we go about doing this, uh, handling this situation for us, uh, eliminate these kids and stuff from playing on the streets with these go-karts and dirt bikes and four-wheelers and, and other things like that.
Did you say Earl Goodwin Parkway is every street?
I, 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 no, I'm just speaking, it was in six wards. And I'm speaking, uh, about dirt bikes and AVT, uh, AVTs in general.
In general.
And go-karts and stuff, whatever.
I just thought I heard a specific street, that's all okay.
No, they riding around on the city streets.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm speaking that I don't think those things are supposed to be on city streets riding around with no helmets on, little kids riding around with them rather. And, uh, maybe it's grown people too, but the safety of little kids riding around in city streets when cars passing by and they speeding down the roads and, you know. I'm just trying to figure out how we can eliminate this, uh, how can we go about with some kind of, uh, process of, uh, helping, helping the citizens out from hurting any, anybody that's on these, uh, little vehicles or whatever.
It's gonna take an main increase surveillance, but you know how many police officers we have. It can't, it takes surveillance and reporting as well. Um, I've actually had to call the police myself about not that matter, but unrelated matter. So, they're, they're gonna need help from the citizenry with reporting it whenever it occurs because they can't, if somebody's on a four-wheel, by the time the police get there, normally they're gonna be gone. Normally. But if, if citizens are alerted to report it immediately, that might just happen to be a cruiser close enough to get there before they get away. So, it's gonna take increased surveillance and incre- increased reporting, uh, by the citizenry. Uh, but, but we can still look further into what else. I think the cameras might help.
Yes.
And, and we can, that's a lot of the council, we can do a surveillance for it.
For, a what?
We can put it on this app.
Sure, 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 sure.
We need to put it out because, you know, he has some kids got hurt. We have a young man right now. And you have a new woman, uh, Jimson, uh, Black, he's five.
Yeah.
Uh, he's in, uh, critical, critical condition. He was flopped. They, uh, it was on a dirt bike, just like you said, over there, Austin, in that area. They had to ask for one. So, we can, what we can do, we can...
Of course you can, but it's still gonna take enforcement of the ordinance is what I'm getting at. You're gonna, you're gonna need increased enforcement and, and surveillance and notification of the violation. Uh, it's gonna take the citizenry of Selma to call the police, call down one more.
But as the body of the council, we can enforce it.
Sure.
Cause all of them riding, no helmet. And then, then they drive a car. They, he, and then, and then, and then, uh, driving it. And so, you might meet one, one on the dirt bike over in the area. You park it and he, he going. And, uh, I definitely need to...
I think, I think it's already a legal.
It really is.
And you have to have a helmet, you have to have a license plate, you have to have a plate card.
But they got a lot of things they don't have.
You, you're talking enforcement for the most part, but, but it takes surveillance to know where and when you can, you can execute it for you.
We should report it as often.
Right, right. And, 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 and I, I get it, uh, I, you mentioned a basketball goal earlier. People think, what's the point of, what's the harm? I had some kids move into my neighborhood, my street. And where there was never a basketball goal, all of a sudden, there was a basketball goal on the edge of the road. And when I drove through once or twice, they acted like I was breaking the law driving down the street and didn't want to get out of the way. And I stopped my car and said, look, guys, you gotta A, get out of the street, but B, I was concerned about where their parents were who allowed them to pull a basketball goal out into the street and play ball.
That's what they do now. They don't let anybody pull a ball.
So, it's, 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 um, it's a combination of concerns and, and enforcement, I think, and surveillance, enforcement and surveillance, and the citizens of Selma reporting this one as soon as they see it happen. Because if they're on a dirt bike, um, or, or four-wheeler, by the time you call 911, they can be having it across town.
All right, the next one is, uh, WDC. I was trying to see the, uh, did we get the grant for the WDC program? Does it still exist, uh, is, is in process of anything of that nature?
I, I believe that's, um, planning and development.
I was reading some, oh, twenty seventeen.
And, and COVID.
But they're still meeting, I think.
Yeah, yeah, they are, they are.
I, I believe that's the thing.
Yeah, they're meeting council, they're active to meet and, and, and are formalizing plans. And the question is, what's next? I can't report on that as adequately as I would like to, but I did know that meeting I sat in on one of the meetings a few weeks ago.
Okay.
And, and, and a report can't get brought back to. Uh, I would want somebody else to do it because I'm not as keen on the current status of their plans as I know someone else in the cities, but we'll get, we'll get you an update, we'll get you an update.
All right, appreciate it. Uh, that's it for me, uh.
Thank, thank you, Councilman.
So, Carmichael, could I, uh, go ahead and talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
Cause you got a long distance to finish.
Yeah, I'm good about that.
Anyway, good afternoon, Council. Uh, I just wanna, I would mention about the Jazz on Grass coming up again. Uh, we would like to have true partnership with the council. You know, uh, Councilman Harold has sponsored this for the last ten years. I know we got a lot of new council members on, on board. Uh, this is a community program, uh, for our citizens to be able to come out and enjoy themselves, right? And also, uh, we, we asking for a few things from the council. Uh, we need, uh, the street blocked off in front of St. James Hotel. Uh, we know how to get the police department, put the barrels out there to block the street off and the entertainment district. Uh, and also, we need, uh, we wanna have a Yellow Ribbon Day so we can, uh, recognize all the citizens that have died from COVID in our community. Uh, so, we're gonna ask the councilperson, all councilpeople, maybe we could wear a yellow, some yellow, uh, at our first meeting in June, uh, you know, just to show that we recognize that, uh, we lost some citizens in the community from COVID, you know? And also, uh, we wanna use, uh, six tents that there's city council on. They down in, uh, uh, finance office, that y'all know we own six tents. Uh, uh, but then the finance office, we would like to use, uh, six, uh, tents. And we like to get like fifty chills and about, uh, six tables. And also, we like to use Washington Street, you know, um, the office, uh, building on Washington Street. To use it as a bathroom. Right now, it's not being used, utilized by anybody, but we just, uh, we, uh, like to add that to, for people to use the bathroom as well as a cooling off spot because sometimes, uh, even this week, you're gonna get up to ninety degrees. And sometimes people get hot somewhere. Sometimes like that, we want to have opportunity for them to go and get cool off Washington Street. Um, uh, and also...
You know my Black Lives Matter somewhere?
Yes, yes, it's, uh, nineteen Washington Street. I was told that, uh, uh, I think, uh, COVID forces gonna start using that. But if, if they do start using, we still can use it as, uh, a bathroom for the, uh, uh, citizens, but we don't have a bathroom down there. And we hate for people to be, everybody going to St. James, St. James, you know?
I need tools is on there.
Uh, yeah, yeah, you, you tools on. And, and, uh, and also, uh, we want to, uh, have it, uh, convention set on standby on the nineteenth because of case of rain, uh, we're gonna take it on the indoors. So, uh, like I said, it's, it's a city partnership.
And you're on there, you'll be being a part of that as a councilperson.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
Jazz on Grass.
And, uh, like I said, this is a great event for the families to come out and just, uh, have a good time and, and it's, and it's, and it's free to the public. And also, we would like this, you know, the council to become a platinum, uh, uh, member, uh, help sponsor this. And we ask for each councilperson, uh, it's a thousand dollars for a platinum sponsor, but we only own like a hundred dollars a piece or something like that. And you can't use stretch there. I know y'all, new councilpeople like, man, I'm, oh, you know, kinda like, uh, skeptical about stretch there, but you can't use stretch there when it comes to a nonprofit agency, nonprofit. And, and all, all money gonna go to is, is providing free entertainment, free to our citizens. That's the spin-off from the free, 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 free. And that's what we're trying to do. And like I said, uh, we're gonna be passing around the stretch area, uh, at Tuesday's meeting. And we hope that, you know, y'all would, would dig down in your heart and at least give a hundred dollars, uh, of your stretch there so we can have this free event. And we're gonna have live bands, live bands, uh, live jazz artists, live blues artists, or, you know. It's just gonna be a great day for family and we just wanna show up the love to all our citizens and that's kind that we have all, uh, due to COVID. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Carmichael, what'd you say? Was that a date of Jazz on Grass?
Yes, it's on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth?
Yes.
June?
June, June nineteenth.
Councilman Randolph?
Is that June, June?
Yeah, it's like that, June twentieth, yeah.
By the food?
Oh, oh, we gonna have, we gonna have vendors out.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, and that is, uh, we, we probably want a true, uh, group of people that, uh, when it comes to vendors, these vendors require to pay a fifty-dollar fee and that fifty dollars will come straight to the city. Uh, you have to have a vendor license to sell any kind of foods on the street. Don't let nobody fool you now. You have to have, uh, vendor license. And I would make sure, uh, if you wanna come to Jazz on Grass, you gotta go, uh, down the stairs and, uh, pay your fifty-dollar, uh, vendor fee.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, they also have, uh, people have little booths too, the vendors that sell, they, you know, people sell a little different thing. They do that too. So, it'd be nice.
Okay, uh, I guess it's my turn here. All right, the historical issues that was discussed, Attorney Madison is gonna move forward with that. Um, the King Street Old Olive Cemetery, uh, there's, there's three letters that I sent y'all. I think they're actually, uh, did everybody get these tonight? Okay, all right, thanks. Uh, there's three letters that were sitting on your desk here, uh, from, uh, three different organizations that pertaining to closing King Street through Old Olive Cemetery for various reasons. Crime, garbage, damage to trees and streets, uh, damage to, to tombs, uh, things of that nature. And if y'all would just read those letters, I've also asked Attorney Madison to see about what the process is for closing streets. Uh, and I know this, this isn't gonna be like a simple thing. Uh, it's obviously gonna take some money, so probably have to be budgeted and things like that. But this, the, the letters are from the Alatime RCND Council, uh, the Cemetery Preservation Group and the Riverbree Native Association. So, those are three people that have, uh, pretty keen interest in, in seeing that, uh, street closed. But, um, uh, I, I would think we'd have to have a public hearing for that street closure, I don't think. So, um, all right, cameras, that's taken care of. Looking forward to getting that, uh, in our email. Uh, and, and infrastructure, I just, I just wanted to, um, I, I brought up the drainage, uh, plan that Gilmore Mills and Cable did last year. I brought it up back in May. And, and I'm pretty sure planning and development was looking at that, but I don't see planning and development on, online with us, uh, tonight. Am I, am I right? Is, is Danielle, is Ms. Wooton with us tonight? I don't think so. Um, and obviously, there's some infrastructure funds that are coming in with the, the COVID, uh, money, the three-point-one million, uh, that can be used for infrastructure. Uh, there's, there's infrastructure, uh, legislation being passed at the federal level. I think we need to stay in front of that. I, I know planning and development is working on that, but I think we need to be informed about what's going on and, and have a say in it and maybe have a meeting specifically about that. Uh, because as I understand it, we need to have shovel-ready project, projects, uh, when that money does come down or we may not get what we need. Um, so, I just kinda wanna bring that to head here and, and say, you know, we need to start working on it. Uh, we can, I can call a public works meeting specific for that, uh, but I, but I want the entire council to be part of it. Um, I, I think it's important to, to have the council and citizens, um, know what direction we're going and hear what direction we're going, cause as the mayor stated, you know, two-hundred billion dollars to fix all of our infrastructure issues here, but we're not gonna get that. So, we're, we're gonna have to prioritize and, and see what we need. And, uh, uh, it makes sense to me to start under the ground and come up, uh, and if, uh, you know, just need to make sure we're all together on some page when it comes to that. Cause that's, that's a pretty big issue that we're gonna be dealing with over the next, uh, four years, kind of five years. Um, and, uh, the SRA report, um, I, I was bringing this forward because President Young was not here. Uh, he mentioned it and he, he asked me to, um, uh, speak about this. Uh, I think everybody has gotten this from when Susan Youngblood presented it to us before. They were quite, they were requesting thirty-five thousand dollars. This would be a budget increase. This, this is not gonna come from anywhere within the budget. Um, uh, I think there probably needs to be some discussion on it. I prefer President Young was, was here, but, um, since it is his item, but, uh, I wanted to bring it to light during the work session so that we could discuss it on, on Tuesday. Uh, if there's any other amounts that somebody sees fit, um, to, to, other than thirty-five thousand, we need to, uh, bring it up. Uh, we, we are halfway through our budget year, so the thirty-five thousand was a request for an entire year. Uh, so, maybe we shouldn't do the, the whole amount. Uh, but they, they have done some good things for downtown, in my opinion, usually, um, with a redevelopment authority. From what I've seen in other cities, uh, they're, they're badly needed for downtowns. They help, um, you know, extremely, uh, the, the help with grants, um, that we've seen they help with, uh, with Mandy Henry's grant that she got that we recently approved with USDA. Uh, they've done the same thing for, uh, the Woolworths, they did the same thing for St. James. So, I think keeping them going, we'll see a return, you know? This is, this is something that improved revenues. Uh, so, any, anytime you're, you're, uh, helping fund some type of economic development authority, uh, that it's gonna, it's gonna, we're gonna see a return on. Uh, y'all have any questions about those items?
Council, Councilman Carmichael, I didn't have a question, but I had a comment.
Okay.
Uh, one of the things that I brought up in a previous council meeting, uh, work session concerned a previous year's audit and failure to get a management representation letter signed up. I think that's been mentioned to BMSS. I know it's been mentioned to Zeronia Prima because I talked with your terms Friday before last, I think it was. Uh, and we've got a longer list of things that are gonna be interrelated with what BMSS is doing before any legal, um, opinion is, is, is reached. One of the things that happened today was, uh, and prior to today, was that FEMA had been asking for verification that we were doing something about the failure of having a letter signed up on. I contacted FEMA today, uh, and one of their representatives, because they kept asking the city interim treasurer, hey, what's up? Where are you on this? So, I called the number I had from communications with, uh, Mrs. Oliver and FEMA and talked with FEMA's representative in that email. What was, what was pointed out to me was, they just wanted an update. So, what I said, I think, the last...
So what I said, I think, the last council meeting, was that I would get with Mrs. Oliver and we would give you a, a position statement on what happened and what's recommended in order for the council to take appropriate action on a policy that's going to be, to be settled by this body to keep that from happening again. And basically, what it's gonna entail is an authorized signatory, which should all, most always be the treasurer or financial director, and an alter, more than likely, an alternate signatory so that one person won't cause the city's financial picture and bond rating to come to a grinding halt. That's what FEMA wants to know, what are we doing about it? I told that we, I would bring this up to the council tonight and that, that you would get from the treasurer and me because I, I think probably being in the middle of that opened my eyes up about the fact that that was even a problem. But it's not that difficult to solve, the council still has to pass a policy, come up with a policy. And I'm more than willing, and the treasurer is more than willing, the interim treasurer is more than willing to give you feedback on that so you can have some guidance on what policies need, but I pretty much summed it up just now.
I keep hearing you saying that. You said that the, the last meeting about that, uh, what you just said. I did, I had some questions about that, do you believe, I know that we have, uh, in our honor, uh, duties for the treasurer and the city clerk with the signatures, with the, uh, signatures of dealing with the COVID. The only, uh, thing that, uh, you put somebody else in there, uh, you were saying something about somebody else being, uh, signing, uh, having a signature, but it only supposed to be the, the treasurer and the clerk.
Well, I guess, I guess. The policy, the policy was not clear is the point I'm making.
Uh huh.
The policy was not clear.
But we have, did you, did you check with Ms. Tyler, we, we had a policy.
You said the clerk, Jim, the clerk?
Mm-hmm.
No, I did, I did not, I did not talk to her yet.
Yes, talk to her.
I can do that in the morning.
Because I was, uh, I, I think we did have a policy set with signatures being on. It was, I think it was only supposed to be the treasurer and the clerk.
And, and that's fine if that's already.
That's the way it's supposed.
If that's already the policy, you may not need a new policy, but we need to clarify, we need to clarify what the policy is, is my point. And, and people are asking us to clarify as well.
And if it clarified, it's by law, it's in here.
In many smaller, smaller cities, the clerk is the treasurer.
The clerk is, in, in, yeah, and, and it's clarified in the law, in the book right here, that the treasurer and the clerk are the only signature of a municipality fund. There are two, it's in here, you go, you look it up.
It wasn't just the funds, Councilwoman, it was signing off on the management representation that that stole the audit completely and got us in trouble with Stanford and Pours and now with FEMA. And it'll cascade is what I'm saying, unless we clarify what the policy is for the city itself. You're right about the.
It's the.
Yeah, but, but we still have, I mean, it's a policy or should have, and, and I did not ask Ivy Harrison yet, but will in the morning first thing.
But we should have one.
When that she is still authorized as a signatory. When the, when the issue came up last year, nobody was in position to say to me what the policy was, is what I'm getting at.
Right.
And now that I'm hearing that, you may not even need a policy, but we need to clarify that fact too.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll talk to her first thing in the morning.
Mm-huh.
All right, uh, was there anything else, Attorney Madison?
I don't know, no sir.
Okay. You don't know, that's a, all right, all right, committee meeting in progress, anybody? You got any?
Well, I got mine, it's a bit like a book, where everybody got the copy and I'll be bringing it up, uh, once. I hope I have what I want for the Dallas Academy, I'm gonna, uh, bring forth the body of the council on the Dallas Academy, how much money that we received, uh, during the period for Dallas Academy when their building caught a fire and, uh, all the repairs that the other side of the insurance, uh, did, the total amount of money that was, uh, that came through the city for the request of all the work done on Dallas Academy. But I do have a lot of other things, but I, I, I refer to that my committee, uh, and other council members look it over and I will bring it, uh, up on the Tuesday night.
Uh, any other, uh, committee reports or meeting dates that need to be announced?
Yes, um, public work, I'm sorry, not public work, public safety meeting is scheduled for Friday, May twenty-eighth at noon, and it'll be held in the chambers.
Right, that's Friday, May twenty-eighth.
Yes, public safety.
Yeah, public safety, okay.
Is Friday?
May twenty-eighth.
Or May twenty?
All right, anybody else?
Uh, we need to have a finance committee meeting, but, um, my schedule is, I'm just gonna have to figure out when.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Travis Wayne, I'm this body of the council, you should know this. July, we were supposed to start our, and I, I'm telling this body of the council, we are taking too long to place people. Our treasurer should have been, been, because we are doing all of these things and we bringing in the period to bring a new person in, he's gonna have to be brought up to the level. But we're coming in to bringing us stuff for the budget, to bust a look at. Also, our tax collector. We, we need to move on that, and that's why Mr. Harvey, if we can get a date, we need to put it out so people can start bringing their, we need to do this soon, we need to put it out so people get a little time to get their, uh, application in so we can be ready, because our months are rolling around.
I think we need to, need to meet to come with the day, we're in the start of the process.
Mr. Harvey, we need to, we need to get it.
I, I accept my statement. Yeah, I, I think what I wanna do is, I'm gonna circulate, we're having a hard time getting an acceptable, well, I say acceptable, a, a job description for an announcement, I think I can make some modifications to what we have and circulate it to the committee.
I thought Mr. Hunter had those.
He did.
He had three or four different ones.
Yeah.
I think it was, I, I thought we were gonna allow B M S S to kinda give us a little bit.
Yeah, and, and they kinda, their comments were based on the fact that it's just a job announcement.
We don't have to have an office.
Yeah, what we really don't need.
Just have to have a requirement.
Yeah, yeah, when we, when we.
Just what we're getting down to.
Yeah, or to the actual hiring.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Please move on this.
Yeah.
Uh, on, on, on serious, I think I'm on this body of the council to pass another. I, I'm, we need a budget, we need to not pass another budget that, that we sit here and voted, I'm sorry, or we voted for a budget that we did not go through, and we got new peoples on here.
Yep.
And we getting all this equipment and everything, and we gotta have these new people in places, so, uh, we should not. I mean, once we've been here, how long has wait been gone?
Twenty years is what it's been.
So we need to move on it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm available Wednesday, twenty-sixth, if I, I may be trying to pull something together for next week, if not, it's gonna be first week in June.
Huh? Say, you say June?
Yeah, first week in June.
Oh.
Either next Wednesday or the first week in June, which is the.
Definitely, we need to.
Yeah.
I'll try next week.
Yeah, I'm, I'll try.
Okay, just, good prime, uh, I'll give you a leak, Miss Allison.
Just think, if we, if we do an announcement from June first to the thirtieth, that'll give us, I mean, that'll give us a little bit of cushion.
Yeah.
And, and, and it was, I think it's also important that next Monday, it's been, to review the B M S S.
Exactly.
Page two stuff and get them on, I think they're gonna have a bunch of process locked in.
Yeah, we need to identify some of the areas that we want them to move in.
Yeah.
But what about, you know, you know, finance office? What update is B M S S gonna give to the, uh, for the system to be updated more?
Yeah, I think that's part of the B M S S process, we need to, we need to, we need to walk through it.
Yeah, that, that, I think that was part of the, yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right, uh, there was a business, meeting adjourned.